We had classes up here at 25. He's even had a class, I think, at 32 last year. And our rooms are pretty big here at the high school. And we were fitting everyone in. They set up rooms at three feet and at six feet. At three feet, he could get 25, 22 to 25, depending on the location of the classroom here at the junior, senior high school. Going to six feet, we're down to 19 or to 17, depending on the size of the classroom and where it is located in the building. At the Mitchell School, they are used to a 22 to 24 class average. That's at three feet. Going to the six-foot model cuts him in half, cuts Mr. Gentile in half. He's down to about a 13 or 14. Am I right?
Twelve.
Twelve. When you can only have half a class, that's why the hybrid model works for us. And that we could go an AA, then a Wednesday, full remote day for everybody, and then a BB. And we can, you can ask questions about that, too. The principals are ready to answer that on the curriculum and in the guidelines that we're going to talk about. I'm talking about the bigger picture. And I want that to be, and I think that that's something that I need to say this evening. As a superintendent of school, yes, I sit with Dr. Williams and I sit with the principals and I listened to their plans yesterday. However, the big picture is, I talked to Mr. Noble yesterday and Brian Caley today about an HVA system, about getting air conditioning in the high school gymnasium. Getting air conditioning for Mrs. Byrne in the elementary school, at Central Elementary School in the gymnasium, so that we have a big learning space if we needed to open up that as a classroom. We also talked about putting air conditioning in at, an HVA system in at the Mitchell School, in the gymnasium and in their cafeteria. How much does it cost? What is the time constraint? How can we get it done prior to September 16th? Why do I continue to say September 16th? Because the MTA and the commissioner agreed that we would start school 10 days later so that each teacher could have 10 days of professional development for online and remote learning, learning new platforms, number one. The second is professional development on safety and health. What are we looking for? What do we need to do in the classroom? How do we maintain our, how do we maintain a safe distance? You may have seen around the building, so that's why we start, that's why we're starting on September 16th. If you have been in any of our buildings or any of the offices, especially at the Central School, the whole front area and their vestibule has been changed. You're going to see Plexiglas, you're going to see two doorways, you're going to get stuck in one doorway. The outdoor door is going to shut behind you, but you're just going to be in a glass enclosure. The secretary is going to be able to see you right away, take your ID, and we'll let you in. But we need to be careful about that, too, on how we're letting people in at this time. We're even talking about how we're going to talk to parents about if somebody forgets something at home on that day, what that, what that protocol is going to look like. The reason we need to make a decision is we can't go any further without having a decision on hand. If we want a hybrid model, let's choose the hybrid model so that we can start planning on Monday morning, or Friday. I'm going to give all my principals off tomorrow. I'm giving, I told Dr. Williams to please stay home. I told John Shea, please stay home, John. They need a break. They're working hard and they're working for our kids and they're working for all of you. And I know that you're working hard. And I'm not saying that anybody, and I'm taking it lightly, but they were here, they are here tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop speaking, but I want to give that, that cement that we are confident that we are planning and doing what needs to happen to have a fully successful hybrid model. I will say this, will somebody get sick in East Bridgewater? Yes. Yes, it's going to happen. We watch the news every day, we watch, we listen to AM radio or NPR, I do. It's going to happen. Some of you already may have been sick, some of you might not known you have been sick. We have, people are getting sick. All I can say is, we will do our best to keep you safe and healthy. We can't panic as a community, because I have to tell you, if you look outside tonight, we have our drama doing their dress rehearsal in masks. And for the last three weeks, they've been out there in 105-degree temperature. When I have an AC in this, in this building, a $75 million building, those kids belong in this AC and they belong inside. But I can't do it because it's unsafe. And I don't want people to get mad at me and upset that I'm not thinking of their health and safety. But those kids deserve, everybody in this community to go watch them tomorrow night and on Saturday night. For 105 degrees last week, or that mugginess, these kids were out there. And they even had those dress rehearsal on. And if you didn't see them tapping out there, you feel like you want to tap when you're out there. I didn't even want to go to Mr. Noble's office yesterday. I wanted to join in the tapping because it was so fun and the kids were laughing and enjoying themselves. That's what school's about. It's about being in class with your friends. It's about learning, grasping a new concept that you couldn't get last week, but now you got. It's about going to a game on a Friday night. It's about jump roping for heart. It's about sitting next to your new friend in kindergarten for the first time you get to eat with 10 other kids at the round table without somebody unwrapping your sandwich. That's what school's about, for me. It's about watching every student walk through those doors, not just here, God bless you, over at Central School and the Mitchell School. So tonight, as this goes through, that's three feet at 29 desks. Then on the other side, you see 18 desks, 19 desks for Ju-, right? So if you have any questions, please raise your hand. The mics are ready. And we're going to wipe the mics down as you come up and we'll wipe them off and you can ask any question you want. All the principals are here this evening. Sir Gentile's hiding back there. He doesn't want any questions tonight. Anybody have any questions so far?
I can speak loud.
Okay.
Who is vetting the hand sanitizer pads for this kid for the evening?
I'm sorry, what?
Who is vetting the hand sanitizer pads for this kid for the evening?
Who's vetting it?
Yeah, some hand sanitizer pads are not safe. They came with the good eye skin. What about the kids with sensitive skin?
So, we, we have been going through, the Department of Education has gotten us, the people who, the companies that we can buy from. Our nurses also are vetting all the products that we bring in. Mrs. Clifford, I should have, I'm sorry Karen, I didn't mention Karen Clifford. She is our COVID response director for the district. The Department of Education said the superintendent can't be that person, the assistant superintendent can't be that person, it can't be a principal. So we brought our K through 12 director of guidance and knows the kids, understands all three buildings and understands Central. So Karen Clifford is actually, as you can see, it's Kaye Clifford. Send your emails to her. We got about 300 in the last hour or so to the school committee, to Karen, to myself. We know you want to come back to school. We hear it. But yes, the nurses, Karen Clifford goes on a list to make sure. And we also have a list of students from each of the buildings who we have, we already know, and this is going off a little off your question, 259 students who have compromised health issues. We already know those and we already know who those students are. We will be reaching out to them once this model is pushed down and then we'll talk to each parent. Our nurses will be reaching out to the parents to find out what model they want, want to do for health and safety. As you know, FAPE, I cannot not tell a student they cannot come to school. Public education is open to everyone at all times. We are inclusive. Anybody, I can't tell you not to come. If your son or daughter has sensitive skin or there's something that they can't use one of these products, we have, we know someone at the Mitchell School. Mr. Gentile makes sure whatever product comes in, that on these wipes has to, has to be a certain wipe in that, in that building itself, because we have someone very highly allergic. So we have vetted all of the products that we can use at the Mitchell School through Mr. Gentile and the person that is there. So yes, we do vet it. It's through the Department of Education. Karen Clifford goes through the, the list and then it goes to the nurses. And the nurses tell us if it's okay.
Liz, the facility subcommittee is also, Brian Caley is going to go on the ingredients and put it up on the website.
Yep. And we'll put up the ingredients. I don't know if you heard that, but the facility subcommittee, they've decided to put the ingredients and all the things that are used in the wipes on the website.
Air cleaning supplies.
Air cleaning supplies, yes.
Hi. So you said that this school is going to be full five-day, they signed up for five-day program?
Yes.
And then kindergarten, you are looking to have a full five-day, but you haven't confirmed yet?
Yes. We are looking at that model. There are people around the building that's complaining. That's why, that's why I have the mic. I shouldn't walk. Tell me next time, Bill, stop me. Stop me, Kate.
So the two questions I have then is just that, if, when do we find out about kindergarten? When will we find out when that decision's made? And then when you do the hybrid model, it looks like on the PowerPoint that you had, you know, group A this week would be Monday, Tuesday, and next week would be Thursday, Friday. Why would that decision be made versus A and B every Monday and Tuesday of the week? Wouldn't that be kind of easier for people to?
So the first question is, when would we know about kindergarten? If we, if the school committee decides tonight we're going into the hybrid model, at that point, we know what we can fit. Mrs. Byrne knows that right now in the hybrid model, she cannot fit all seven kindergarten classrooms of 22 in Central School. She needs an alternative placement or places to go. We have looked at alternative sites and alternative schools. That doesn't mean Mrs. Nichols will not be in that alternative site when Mrs. Byrne is at the Central or vice versa. They will be at those alternative sites with the teachers. What teachers would go with those students or where they would be at this time, we're not sure. We did look at some modulators today and yesterday, Mr. Shea and I were looking at them. Mrs. Byrne would have to, we would want Mrs. Byrne's recommendation in how many classes. We believe we could fit three, three classes in a modular at this time. One, two, and three, like three pods. Second question was, Kate?
The rotation.
The rotation. For the first half of the year, the first half, so if we start September 16th to after Christmas break, we would go AA, remote learning, BB. The following week, AA, remote, BB. Because of how the As and Bs fall in the first part of the year, there will be days that As miss and Bs miss. So if we flip that and after Christmas vacation and put the Bs first and then the As last, then we'll have the exact amount of hours that we need for both groups. We need 5.5 hours of instruction daily for the high school, junior, senior high school model, seven through 12. We need five hours daily per DESI regulation at the Central School or K through six in the Mitchell.
So I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? So it's every week you change it?
No.
After the holidays?
Yes, yes. So first half of the year, AA, Wednesday, remote, BB.
I'm sorry, I wish you could put the visual on.
If you want to go back, Kate, and, yep. Caley, we're not, we're not, Mrs. Byrne, she's, she's tough like that. She does that to me during a lot of my things. Here come the hands. So yes, and then come Christmas, uh, Christmas break. Teacher.
I am a teacher.
I know. I remember.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. One, there was something you just mentioned. If the kindergarten goes full, they would have 22 kids in a class still with a six-feet distance?
If, if we can fit, if we can open up classroom space, if we have the space, we can do it. If we don't, we will hire more teachers to teach kindergarten. But we need the space to do that. And Mrs. Byrne, it may not be that perfect fit, like Mrs. Nichols would say, you know, it's not just 22 to 11. It might be one classroom at 22 because we can fit it in that classroom with a teacher at six feet and the teacher can still remain that six feet. It may be 16 in one classroom, it may be 13 in another, it may be 14 in one. That's why Mrs. Byrne, we've asked Mrs. Byrne not to go out and say, okay, we're gonna, we, right now, who your child has is who your child has. But if we can fit it, we're going to try. Hold on one second.
My second question, and again, I want to preface by saying, I really appreciate the work that's been done and the gathering of the PDEs, because not every district has done that. And you're also going to find out now, I'm a math teacher, so I'm big on the data. And I recognize, you know, you said someone is going to get sick. And I understand, you know, the numbers are out there. EB's at 2.5% positivity. We got a town next to it that's over 5 right now. So in theory, if there was a different state, it would be a little company. My question is, is there a line in the sand where we're going to say, hey, this is too much and we got to shut it down?
Sue, boy. So.
Time is.
So we, you and I, I'm not going to pick on her, because as you can see, she's in the dark and it's the silent majority. She's like my silent data expert here. Sue and I did speak about, is there a line in the sand? Go ahead, Sue.
We haven't given a percentage from the state yet. In hand, Governor Baker is probably going to make that decision for the entire state. But we don't, we really don't have a number. I mean, we're going to have to follow data, you know, be quite meticulous in that. If we get a cluster of school, then, you know, the school's going to have to take some action.
And that's, that's what we do, you know? And again, schools are event-driven. I've said that, I've said that a lot of times in these, in these places. It's event-driven. I can't, I don't have an answer to that. I try to follow the CDC guidelines. I listen to DESI. I, drawing a line in the sand, I could, you know, draw it at 4%. Tomorrow, we could go 4% and everybody will still say, no, 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 we're fine, send them. Because we, we are, we're not a huge district. But what's a lot, what's not a lot? So that's something we need to determine. But thank you.
Again, you answered part of my question.
Want us?
Yeah. I'm going to try not to fumble it. Again, and I appreciate all the research. I appreciate like all the different models, you know, that, that you've come up with. And I recognize that these are difficult times and there are no easy answers here. And, and full disclosure, I am a hospice nurse. I've taken care of people who have passed away from COVID-19. So I kind of feel like I have skin in this game because if people get sick, then they become my patients at some point. So this becomes a community issue as opposed to just what's going on in school. My question is, as a nurse, I am prepared to deal with someone who has COVID-19. I know how to use PVE, I know how to protect myself, I know the risks, I know what I'm doing, because I've been trained in infection control. What kind of training have the teachers gotten in infection control? And also, what does the teachers' union feel? What is their gut instinct on which way to go?
The teachers' union spoke last night, they would like remote learning. They want.
I'm going to get the training announcement.
They want remote. They have made that vocal. And I think the MTA, the Massachusetts Teacher Association, has made that. And they have said, we want to be remote. That's, that's the challenge. The other challenge is what you're asking me. Have they been trained? No. Will they be trained the first 10 days of school? Yes. Is that enough training? I don't know. I'm not a, I'm not a nurse, I'm not a doctor. But they're teachers and we do trainings every year. This year, the MTA went into the commissioner and said, give us 10 days extra for professional development in COVID, in making sure that we can spot things, making sure we know we're safe, regulations, protocols, policies, these types of things. We've never had 10 days of professional development. So we have time. We have right now five nurses in the district. We have one in each building and we do have a head nurse who goes to each building daily. We are hiring another full-time nurse and possibly three CNAs to spot check in and out in the other buildings in case of infection, if we go in the other way. I appreciate what you have to say and I truly understand. I do. I'm listening, but I also have the, and then there's the other end of the spectrum. I have moms and dads that have five-year-olds that can't wait to go to kindergarten and six-year-olds that can't go to wait to go to first grade. And so it's, you know, it's that tug of war, it's that tug of war right now, exactly what you're going through. Hold on, I got one over, I saw.
Yeah, but excuse me. Can you talk about the home learning, the platforms that you have that we incorporated for the students that are learning from home? How is that going to be a little bit different? The level of engagement with the teachers, how the parents are going to know how they're doing? How are we going to know how the, how our students are doing, how our kids are doing?
So the remote learning, this year, we're going to do professional development for parents. We're going to have some online training for parents or if they would like to come in and learn some of the platforms that we'll be using either at the junior, senior high school. I know that the Central School uses some platforms, Mr. Gentile uses different platforms on the online learning. We'll be doing PD. We got to take attendance this year. We didn't take, the attendance was spotty last year. The commissioner has required attendance. We also have to give grades this year. Last year, we did not have to. We had to give some type of pass, fail, or incomplete, complete. Most of everybody passed, everybody moved on. This year, students will be graded. How will we know how they're doing? I think there's going to be a lot more interaction with your teachers, a lot more interaction with your principals. I think you'll hear a lot more. You want to come over here to the yellow?
I have two questions and I promise I'll make them really, really quick. So I kind of want to address what he said about percentages. Obviously, I know the governor would close schools, if that was the case. But what would be like a triggering event? Because real sick still exists. And real sicknesses are similar to COVID symptoms. So that's question one, what a triggering event would be. And question two would be, and this is personal for me, I have a little girl that turns three on September 12, 12, and she hasn't been evaluated for her IUD. She has a diagnosed hearing loss, she's not going to do well with masks.
It's, I'm glad that you brought that up because I belong to, we belong, East Bridgewater belongs to the Reed's Collaborative. They are our deaf and hard-of-hearing collaborative. They are the experts in this. They brought that up today. They showed the masks that they will be using. She showed us her, Teresa Craig showed her plan. And we work with Reed's. That was something that was brought up is how would we, how do we work with a child that has a hard-of-hearing in our own district? They talked about face masks. We talked about you can't go alternative desk. They need to be looking at your face and how close does a child need to be? Those, that's a great question. And we're going to be working with Reed's very closely on that. Kate, do you want to? I want to give you this.
When it comes to the evaluation for your daughter, that's going to be three, September 12-ish, is that what you said? Consent's in, paperwork is in, timelines will pick up, and testing will start as soon as we're back in session. As far as things that Superintendent Legault was talking about, for students that need that visual, there, we have face shields, there are masks that are see-through, there are lots of things that we need for students to help read lips. And that would go for students who get speech and language services as well as those that are hard-of-hearing. We also have FM trainer systems that would have a microphone for teachers to help elevate and, you know, make the volume louder for any student that would require that. So any accommodations that your child would require, we would still provide.
The IUD, do you have?
Yeah.
Jalen is not here, however.
Yeah, that's why I talked about the consent to test, but that would still happen. And once we get back to school, those days start kicking in, so.
So are you guys still eating for that? Because I know there's other children that turn three, say, late August or early September or late. So you guys are still eating for that three?
Yes. We're going to be in compliance, 30 days to assess, 45 days for the meeting to take place from the date of consent. Realizing not in school days don't count towards that accumulated time.
Right there, I, I saw you a couple of times.
So I just have a few questions. I understand we're going to propose a hybrid, it's not confirmed, we don't know what's going to happen.
Right, the school committee has, like, the district.
Okay. So I know earlier this week when you talked about hybrid, it was kind of like what the cutoff is, because I have kids in multiple schools. So I can't have a high school child in one day and then the middle school child in another day.
I'm going to let Andrew answer. I know what you're going to ask, but keep going.
And he's not going to ask that.
Yep.
It's the whole aftercare program. Right now, it's extremely unflexible. You have to commit to the end of the year for the whole year. And I don't know my situation when we're going to home and blah, blah, blah. So I don't know what's happening.
I'll answer before and after, but Andrew's been doing, Mr. Gentile's been doing a great job on, on the movement, on the cohorts. Hold on, let me, let me answer before and after, then you have it, then you have it all done. Before and after will become more flexible. We had to follow the guidelines right now, so many kids in, in the classroom for the summer. When, I know, and I, it is, it does get strict. We are looking for alternative spaces. Today, Dr. Williams and I had a meeting with Joe Lever at YMCA. We may be running a program, working with the YMCA, with our East Bridgewater and their employees, bringing people back that are on furlough, so that we can have more students in a before and after care situation. And we're going to be looking at alternative places here in the district as well. And we're looking at not, on the days that parents cannot be home with their child and the day that the student, or the child is on the remote day, that we would offer classroom time at a different location where the Chromebooks could be used, books could be used, and we would run it, and we would try to help the academics so that parents could go to school, or parents could go to work.
And that can change throughout the flow of the year.
It could, yes. But yes, and we are, we, we know. Dr. Williams and I spoke about that today. Hold on, I'm going to let Andrew answer the question.
Just with regard to students in, the cohorts that they fall within and siblings, both internally within buildings and across the buildings, that's something we've already started to work on. So all three of the buildings have already been in communication. I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Nichols, who has done a great job with putting together a list for us to refer to, so that we can see siblings that are cross-building. So to say that those things are settled right now wouldn't be accurate. There's a lot of other details related to the cohorts, but we are actively working on that. One thing I would say and ask for parents to do, if you have children that may be siblings and in particular siblings with different last names, I had a couple of parents reach out to me today, that was the case, just let us know. Send us an email to any of the building principals that may be impacted by that and we'll be certain to add that to our list. We're going to make every attempt possible to accommodate families, because we certainly understand that with the hybrid format, there's going to be challenges. And if there's one that we can take out of the picture, in particular, having families, you know, being able to send their kids to school on the same days, we're, we're going to really strive to make that happen for everyone.
I'm coming back to you, I'm coming back to you in a minute.
While I understand, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and while I understand we want to get kids back in school, I personally feel like we're rushing it a little bit. It's been said several times that our numbers are trending down with naturality in Massachusetts, they seem to be going back up. And, you know, we make the call to say, there's a couple inches of snow on the ground, it's not safe to send the kids, but yet it's safe to send them. And then I listened to the roundtable last night and we're putting it on the parents to take temperatures in the morning. I don't buy that. Like, I cannot believe that every parent is going to take their kids' temperatures in the morning.
No, but unfortunately, that's what, that's where we are in society. And we tell people, we, right here, Mrs. Byrne, on opening day of kindergarten and all of her elementary classroom, or elementary talks, she will say, if your child doesn't feel well in the morning, they're not going to feel well at here. There is probably not a day that goes by at Central School that a child comes in within 13 seconds of hitting that doorway that they have to call home. People send their children to school sick. It's going to happen, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. It's part of, it's part of school. I get what you're saying. The remote part of this, though, if you do not want to send your child to school, you have that option. And then when you're ready, you can send them.
And we won't lose the space.
You will not lose the space. No, you will not lose the space. So when, just keep them out of September 16th, October 16th. I'm just throwing that out. If on October 16th, you call me or call the principals, you're not going to call me, you're going to call the principals and you say, we're ready for, we're ready for John to come back. principals, and you say, we're ready for, we're ready for John to come back. Mr. Gentile will look at the cohort that he is in on A-Day and say, can we get him back in, and then give you a time as his cohort comes through. It may be, it may take five days, it may take eight days to get him back in, because you're going to follow that cohort. So if you call him on a Monday, he's going to have to figure out where he's at and how, or he or she to get them back in. Am I correct?
Just to add to that, so as we plan for the students, the students, if student, if we go back in a hybrid model and students opt to stay home remotely, we still are going to assign them to a class and to a teacher. So in terms of having a spot for them, that spot will be there. That being said, in terms of transitioning them from fully remote to potentially a hybrid model, it may take some time. And the Department of Ed's gives districts up to four weeks to be able to make that transition, to be able to ensure that everything's been accounted for, so that if there's spacing issues in the classroom or something like that, we can handle it. I wouldn't anticipate it taking that long, but it will take some time to just make that transition. But there will be a space for the child.
Andrew, from what I'm understanding, if you are remotely, you have to report to class, everybody together at the same time in the morning, correct?
That's what we're, that's what we're planning for.
Because my daughter did that module last year for the remainder of the year, and that's what, you're going to log into Zoom at 8:00 AM, the teacher takes attendance, and you listen to the class. Is that right?
Yes. And I think, and you can certainly chime in if I'm saying anything out of place for you guys, but what I'm anticipating with regard to Mitchell, whether we were in a hybrid model or a fully remote model, the remote component of that will involve daily, regularly scheduled live interaction with the teachers. Now, we haven't flushed out all of those details and exactly what it looks like, but that's what I would anticipate, is that there is a regular schedule that they're following, that they're, you know, interacting with their teachers around all the different subject areas, all of that.
Okay.
So I know we're all working towards making the transition from remote to in-person as easy and simplified as possible for every student. So the plans that we're developing are so in this situation that a student can come back and won't skip a beat, whether they're home or in the classroom. You know, whether they're Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C, we're going to try to do our best to make sure that transition is as simplified and as smooth as we possibly can make it. So that's what we're really working on it right now.
I just wanted to show, this slide right here indicates, at Central School, if we're talking about the hybrid or if we were fully remote, but here for the hybrid, all students would start their day every morning having a live synchronous morning meeting with their class. So whether you're home or in person, you're getting to greet each other, have an activity together, and the teacher can launch learning for the day for both groups. You can also see then they have their in-person learning, their remote learning's going on. And at the end of the day, on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the days that we actually have students in session and working remotely, they will all have closing circle together, online, back in touch together, ending their day, talking about the highs and lows and what has happened. Also, throughout the day, there will be synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for those remote learners that still may have time to be live with their teacher and their class. That will be dependent on the schedule, which would be more than what we had in the spring.
I want to add to something really important for you to know.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of anxiety in parents.
Yes.
On this online learning, because it's not as simple as just putting a kid in a computer to log in, okay? I think we have to perhaps assist the parents to understand how can they take advantage of the Massachusetts family, emergency family leave? Because we're going to, most of us are going to need to take time off from work to be home assisting our kids. And a lot of the parents cannot afford to take their time off from work. But the Massachusetts emergency family leave pays us to stay home to do that. So I haven't heard that yet, and I think it's really important that you talk about this, because a lot of the parents need that financial understand, understanding of this, so our kids can really have the parents' attention to be successful home, regardless if it's going to be half a hybrid mode or fully. And the other part of it, too, is the whatever parts the guys' council are going to put in there. Because the whole time we're out for the three, four months, I have not heard from one of them. So I think right now, I'd like to hear about that. It's going to be really, really critical for us parents to be able to, right now, I work full-time, okay? We had a meeting at work today to discuss how are we going to be flexible with our employees to be able to take advantage of the family, emergency family leave, to be able to stay home and do this. So I just wanted to let you know that you talk about this.
I, that's a great point. I'm going to listen today, and then I will come back around to that. Right here in the front row.
Quick question, well, an important question.
And then I see, I know, up there on the orange, you're going next. I got you. I felt bad, your arm's been up that long.
So as you said, it's going to be inevitable that someone in the building is going to get COVID. What is the plan for when that happens? Are we going to be notified as parents? Are you going to tell us if someone in class has tested positive in the grade, in the building? As parents, we need to know what that plan is. And I'm just going to add to that, that, you know, we're at a point that if you are symptomatic, then you have to wait a couple of days to get a test, and then you have ten days till you get your test results back. What is the plan?
Plan is, is that if we do, if someone tests positive, if a child gets sick, regardless of what the sickness is on that day, because we're not, we're not going to know exactly what it is when that child comes down, or says, I don't feel well. That child comes down to the nurse's office. That child is put into a room. We have to have alternative rooms in every school, and call the parents. The child must go to their pediatric doctor and get a test. The doctor will have to inform the school nurse and the school principal, and then obviously the principal will involve me. At that time, we will make the determination of what it is, who, where was the child in the building?
Who's the doctor?
I'm sorry, what?
Who's the weak in that situation? Is that?
It would be, I'm going to have to wait for the doctor to tell me, because I, we've already had, we, I have it all the time. I've had kids with MRSA, or somebody said, oh, the child has MRSA. The doctor calls me back, or the doctor calls one of the principals and says, it's not MRSA. And so we get that, and then we have to, and then, as you know, I'll write my letter and say, we thought we had it, but we don't. I don't want to jump to that, because people will panic. People, somebody's going to come in on the opening day and sneeze, and somebody's going to get COVID. So, and we know that. So we're going to wait for the doctor. Like Sumaloy said, people need to, don't travel from now till when we open the school.
But if you ask him sometime, okay, Johnny is in my daughter's class.
Yep. You're going to know. You will know. You will know. You will know.
Is everyone in the building? Is it just, that's what?
It depends. We'll have to trace it, and we're going to have to know where that child was in the building, and where, what time did, what time did the child tell us he was sick or she was sick? Where were they in the building? Were they on the bus? What, where were they with other students? Call the parents. Do the parents know that they didn't feel well last night? We have to trace it, and like Sumaloy said, we've got to take it one step at a time, so that we don't, but yes, you will know. I'm not going to keep it from you. You will know. Up there in the back.
What about the children on IEPs? Because last spring, no offense, that remote learning was a joke. We got no extra help. I went off my kid for eight, 10, 12 hours a day because I was laid off, and I would get incomplete, we'd get incomplete grades. We would get no help, no understanding. I got emails from Mr. Gentile saying we weren't doing the work. And I was watching my kid turn that stuff in, every day he was turning stuff in, and I got emails, we weren't doing the work, or they were incomplete. And I hung them every day. And I still want to see how it was. That remote learning was a better plan.
I hope I, first of all, I'm sorry about that. I do have a better plan, and I hope we're better prepared for that. Me. You're not the first parent who has talked to me like this and is upset. And if you don't think that that makes me upset, it drives me insane. They'll hear about it next week when we're in a meeting. I ask all the time, a student on an IEP in this district, we have thirty-five students right now that we have identified that those students, if possible, we want them in school every day. These are students with IEPs that we would like in school every day. Do we want other students with IEPs that are at-risk students? Yes. Do we need to do a better job? Yes. Are the principals going to do a better job of, of being more in the classrooms this time? Yes, they are. Are we going to make a better, are the guidance counselors going to be more aware of the situations and be calling parents and calling students more often? Yes, we are. We're going to work off our weaknesses. I know we had weaknesses in the spring. I'm not proud of them. Believe me, they won't be a weakness anymore. Go ahead. Yeah.
Well, my kid was just being transitioned back to being in a full inclusion, but we're still supposed to have the power of help. And obviously, I wasn't that good. Can I tell you one thing that would have worked with my expression mine?
Sure.
And a lot of kids with ADD. Number the pages. If you've got to keep scrolling down, put one of four, two of four, three of four. Because let me tell you, when he got down to that one page of questions, he answered them and said, there was a page below. We didn't see it.
Yep, you're right. And I can tell you that Mr. Gentile's here, Mrs. Dupre is here, and I'm sure that all the principals are listening to that. I'm listening to that. We've got to do a better job. And we take that as the administration team. We look at that and said, you know, maybe we should have looked at, looked at some lessons that were going out, look at them a little better. We do have our instructional assistants working. They should be in those classrooms, on the inclusionary classrooms, and they should be in on the Zoom model, or the GoToMeetings, the Google Classroom, or the platform that, what you choose. We'll get there. We're going to try, I can't fix every problem right away, but I am, that's something that, this is not going unscathed. You've been up. Thank you.
I have a question about, adding on to the question about notifying the parents. I have children in two different schools, so if my child, my youngest is exposed, would my oldest be notified? Is it the classroom? I'm just wondering how far it would kind of like spider web.
Again, as Sumaloy has, has explained it to me, is we would trace it, we would try to figure it out, call the parent. Are they together? Get them tested. Let us know. One may be asymptomatic, one may have symptoms. We have to know. We may have to quarantine both of them, and we may have to keep them out of school. And then at that time, then the building principals, if they're at the high school, and they're at the Mitchell or the Central School, both principals would be notified, and then we would go down, where was this child? Who was he with? Where was she at? I know I saw it, Mr. McLaughlin, but I'm going to keep going for a minute. Yes.
My daughter and I are pretty traumatized about what happened this spring, because I'm a terrible teacher, terrible. And I'm not going to teach her again this year. So I'm going to look through higher help. And I've been talking to some other parents about maybe their kids joining our pod.
Yep.
So if the additional spacing doesn't come into play, like the Y, I can't bring her to the Y, it didn't come through, and I have a group of three families that would like to share this help, are you willing to work with their cohort to get them on the same day?
Yes.
To do that.
We'll try the best that we can to work with parents who organize to get, we call, I call them a cohort, pod, whatever you want to call them, you know, a community of learners. We will do the best that we possibly can to keep those children together. So for, for carpooling, for pickup and drop-off, for waiting for someone else to come, that's reassuring for us that the three, three or four parents with the five or six kids, they're going to work together. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Up and back, what, right there, with the white shirt, yep.
Okay. So my question is twofold. I know you had mentioned really strongly trying to get everything kindergarten back, and I don't, full-time, I don't disagree with that. But my daughter said that she didn't do the lesson plan on her own this spring. She's not going to do the lesson plan on her own, and the fall. So is that just merely because of space? And if, if it is, why wouldn't you try the other locations, like you said, the other opportunities you have? Why wouldn't you use that space to get the rest of the elementary kids back full-time rather than an additional foreign after-school program or, I mean, I would rather her be going full-time because she's going to get the best out of the schooling, going five days, just like the five and six-year-old in kindergarten.
I'm going to, let me address that. That could definitely be an option this evening. If the school committee decided that hybrid, they wanted to see K through six in, and then seven through 12 was remote learning. There's lots of possibilities out there, and I know there's other school districts doing it. We know that the young children, they can't do it themselves. Kate would be, Mrs. Byrne would be the first person that would say, just cannot, cannot navigate by themselves. It's hard work. That's why we have teachers. It's hard work. It's difficult. We are looking at space. If I can get the space, if I can get the space, they will get it done. That's my job right now. If I can find space, these guys will get it done. I know that the principals will get it done. They'll do the best that they can to get them in. But we also have to make sure that our teachers feel safe enough to get into those classrooms. That's another part of this puzzle, is making sure people feel safe. We don't want any, I don't want faculty or staff anxious, and I certainly don't want children anxious. I agree. I wish I could open up Central School PK 1-2 on opening day.
I understand the remote learning in this spring, if, I'm not saying it's awful at all, it's a lesson thing. You have no control over it, you can have time to prepare. The only thing I'm hoping for in the fall is a little bit of flexibility, because with the Zoom meetings and whatever, it's the same time each week, and not every parent's situation's the same. You know, trying to work from home or having multiple kids, you can't always log in at the same time. There's no other option to make up that time for your child. So then she just loses out because I'm trying to work and take care of other children at the same time. So just a little bit more flexibility is the only thing that I'm.
We'll be flexible. They, principals are talking about it. They know. They absolutely know it, and we do know it. We've got, I had multiple calls that, you know, we have one desktop at home. We have a Chromebook. I don't have Wi-Fi, or the Wi-Fi's not that great. We're offering hotspots. We have extra Chromebooks. All of our teachers have laptops. All of our principals have laptops now. We're ready to go. We're trying to do our best. They will coordinate and make sure that we are most responsive and most communicative with our parents this year. And, and I take full responsibility that we weren't as communicative as we should have been, and that we maybe didn't respond as quickly as we should have. I take full responsibility for that. I'm going to fix that, and we're trying to get there. But I hear that. Yes, I do. Right here in the white shirt.
A quick question aside, with the junior, senior high, where they switch classes in their levels, like what the plan is when they're in school?
So depending on the model, obviously, we're looking at the hybrid, the cohorts. We're going to, we're, next week, we're really going to look at spacing. We go, I know our facilities group has been looking at decals in all the buildings, six-feet decals. Where trouble spots are the bathrooms, you know, get a couple more, maybe eyes on the hallways at times if we have to. I've, superintendent, assistant superintendent have mentioned, what do we need? How do we function? How do we do it the correct way? How do we maintain safety? So we're looking at maybe monitors in the hallways. But as far as, we're not going to be able to be stagnant. It's impossible to be stagnant. We can't use lockers. No student will get a locker this year. That's, that's part of the DESI regulations. We're going to, they're going to have to move in the hallway. So we're going to do directional hallways, directional stairwells, one-way stairwells, one-way hallways. And we're going to need people to, out there really, not, not to use the word enforce, but really focus on, hey, you can't go that way, you got to go the other way, kind of like the grocery store with the arrows. We're going to have a lot of arrows. And we're hoping that, that people will follow the arrows.
You're going to work about the change?
No, we'll get you, as soon as we know what model we're going to use, we're going to, we're going to reach out to and communicate with the parents of, here's the schedule, here's what it's going to look like. We're going to re-release all the schedules for the students from seven to 12, and just so they have it, you can have an idea. We're focusing on orientation for seventh graders, ninth grade orientation as well. So we're really going to put it into practice. We're really going to do the training with the teachers. This is what we need to do to make sure safety is our, for everyone, not just the kids, but for staff. Everyone's going to have full, safe ideas and regulations we're going to try to follow.
I'm going to finish up with, go ahead.
I just, I just got there.
I'm going to finish up right here, and then, I saw your hand up. Okay? We're going to finish up right here.
So I just, I just kind of piggyback on the last question about the remote learning. So my immunocompromised child isn't in the school district, and you wouldn't know about her. And by my family's choice, I will have to keep my other children home. But then what do I do with a child that refuses to remote learn live? And it was an ongoing issue, and I worked with the teacher directly, and she was phenomenal, and she understood that we were getting everything done, but she would never see my child on a Zoom call. And that worries me moving into another year. I'm, I'm going to be solo parenting for the next six months due to my husband's job. And I've got three small children that I can't fight and battle in three different rooms and hope no one's screaming while a Zoom call's going on. And I think that's a common concern that I've heard, parents of the younger children. What do you do when you have a child with that anxiety and that mental health component of getting on a Zoom call with their classmates, and then they're missing out on that? And I know I might personally be capable of fumbling through the curriculum on my own, but I would love for that engagement and have to understand what remote might look like for families that can't do it live, whether it be for multiple children, or work from home, or situations like that.
I got two, two things for you. Number one, we're going to try to do a better job, and, and we're listening to that, and that may be, that may be a conversation where you come in and meet with me, or meet with your principal, or meet with Mr. Phelan, or the school psychologist. or the school psychologist or the guidance, and we'll do something. I have looked into renting, Brian Noble and I spoke about this yesterday. I am looking into renting those RVs. So to put our guidance counselors and our school psychologists in an RV to visit students at home, where they would be comfortable enough to come into an RV and sit and have conversations with the school psychologist, school social, our adjustment counselors, and being able to sit down and have conversations with the guidance counselor and talk about how they're doing in school and what's gonna be happening. Because we could rent and use the COVID response money for that. And I think it would be money well-spent to be able to bring an RV of three educators, adjustment counselor, and a guidance counselor, or maybe a school psychologist, our behavior specialist team, go to a student's house and hey, say, come on out, and let's talk about this, and let's work on this together. And we saw that you didn't get this worksheet done, but let's work on it together so they feel part of the school. We're not gonna fix everything, but we can do a little bit, a little bit each day. And if we can get some RVs in here and we can do some different things, we're gonna do those things. Or maybe we park the RVs in different spaces and, you know, different areas of the community. And parents, you got a nine to 10 at the RV that's parked up in Town Hall or at the YMCA. We laugh at it, but you know what? For an eight-year-old to have an RV roll into your, to your house, and all of a sudden, you know, your favorite guidance counselor walks out, or maybe Mr. Gentile walks out one day and says, hey, we miss you. Let's sit down and let's talk about this. That's what we're gonna do. That's what we're gonna do. And we're trying to do it better than, and we're trying to think of every one thing. I got one last question right here. I saw your hand. I got you.
Sorry. So I was a little bit of a clarification. So did you say that the CDC guidelines say three feet, and you could actually fit all the students, or most of them in the building, at three feet?
The CDC is six feet. They want us to remain at six feet. However, they said for children or school age, we could go to a three-feet with masks on. They've also said at six feet, we can take our masks off if we stay at a six-feet distance.
So if you were actually thinking that at three feet, would you be able to get the majority of our students into full learning, like?
Yes. Yes, we could.
So it's basically you could teach a few of the essential.
Well, I think it's a safety concern for parents. I think it's a safety concern for the community. But yes, the teachers do want six feet, and they do want their masks.
Because I'm a teacher myself, and I want to go back to school. I don't think that, I just, how many teachers are willing to go back to school?
I think, I think all teachers want to come back to school.
I agree with that.
Right. I'm, I hear you. So I'm gonna push it to, we're gonna go to the school committee. Oh. Where?
You're in the back.
I guess I'm just trying to be a little bit more positive here. So in my eyes, if the school opens hybrid, and hopefully that's what we choose to go for, and things go well, we don't get blown up with cases, considering how most of these kids are asymptomatic. And I feel like my kids themselves have come out and said, why do we feel like we're being punished when we're not even the ones getting sick? They're very careful around people that are susceptible. And so I'm just curious to know, when would we revisit going to school off the table for the whole year? Or what? Because as a parent, I'm trying to decide between homeschooling my children or remote doing. If I had to do the full remote plan through the district, I would prefer to homeschool my child because it offers so much more flexibility.
Um, we will, we're gonna follow the data, and we're gonna go inch by inch as a cent, yard by yard as a cent. I can't say that we'll be back October 16th. But what I can say is that if 12 weeks is a grading period, we'll start at three weeks, then the next three, six weeks, then nine weeks, then 12. And we'll watch in a three-week period, the data, see where we're at, take the temperature. That's no pun intended, just saying, take the temperature and take the climate of where we're at, and then we'll try to get back to school. And we are looking at that. We looked at, you know, if it's 12 weeks for a grading period, a quarter, we would go for the 12 weeks, but every three weeks, check in. I think Sue Malloy and Karen Clifford have been speaking on a daily basis, the data of new, of new cases, of where we're at in East Bridgewater. And Sue also gets, I believe, the state data every day, and she has to call into the state every day. So we're in the know. And the two things that I do know is, number one, is right now, the schools are in the lead in the Commonwealth, meaning everybody's eyes are on the schools to get us back. They want kids, you want kids back to school. We want kids back to school. Teachers want to teach. Leaders want to lead. And of course, parents are going back to work. Some are going back now, some went back three weeks ago, and some are gonna go back in four weeks. So we need to figure this out and work together on this. I know that the school committee needs to begin their meeting. And I know that, I see Tim over here getting ready to pull me off. This is so important that you were here this evening. I appreciate all the time and all the confidence that you've put into the leadership team. Mr. Gentile, Mrs. Dupre, Mrs. Nichols and Mrs. Byrne, Mr. Sylvia, Mr. Clements, and Dr. Williams, Karen Clifford, John Phalen, John Shea, and John Shea. They've done a tremendous job getting us here. I can't, I can't tell you the technology that we have coming in. We've increased our bandwidth. We shouldn't have any issues. We've increased our bandwidth at Mitchell School. We've increased our bandwidth in the, all over the district. We have hotspots all over the district. Deb Vaughn is here, has done a, we need to get this model done for the cafeteria and the food. And people think, you know, when I went to leadership school, they said, it's gonna be great. You're gonna talk about kids every day and about doing things in school. And any teacher in this, in this room right now will tell you, it all revolves around the cafeteria. When do they start serving food? When does it stop? How do I get there? When do I get off? And the, and the schedule works around that. Because usually the lunch goes for about two hours at high school, an hour and a half, or hour and 45 minutes. The lunch program is very, very important to us. We are not a free and reduced. We are not a Title I school. We only have 20, we have 22% free and reduced lunch. That's not a large number. However, our students need to eat, and we need to know how many students are gonna be in the buildings when we start. Because every child is gonna get a milk and a juice and a piece of fruit. And if Deb Vaughn was here, she would say a green vegetable, a yellow vegetable, and something hot. I think that's what it is if she's around. She would say, she'd maybe shake her head at me. We thank you very much. The school committee meeting is going to begin. I think we're gonna start right with the model. We'll talk about it. They're gonna have some questions. If you have questions for the school committee, please stay. You can certainly hear the conversation and my recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. So for the school committee meeting tonight, we will have a public comment session. It is limited in time. So if you're interested in making a comment during the meeting, I would ask you to come down here and sign up. We'll go first, come first, sir. And we'll go from this list, we'll start the meeting.
I haven't read this much since grad school, by the way, everyone. Like, I.
Which one is on? Do you want this one? That one. You need it.
She wants to sit next to you. Sure. Here.
Jeff, is there a flag in here?
Right here.
Yeah.
Well, Deb's down. If they, if they wanna come up, they can. If not, what's the matter?
Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting, 5:00 AM, 2020. Tonight's meeting will be broadcast online and live via EB Cam. Thank you, EB Cam, for all of your support of the school department. At this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting. Motion by Teresa, second by Rob. All in favor? Aye. Meeting is now open. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. For those in the audience and at home tonight, we did have a discussion as a committee that we would be wearing masks during the meeting, but that in order for those at home in the audience to hear us clear, we would pull them down while we were speaking, still maintaining our distance from each other for safety. So hopefully, this will be successful tonight. First order of business, I'm actually gonna turn it over direct tonight for the superintendent's corner.
So we're gonna start right, my corner is all about the.
The first order was the.
Oh, you wanna do the?
Sure.
Okay. So I received resignations from Laura Dalton, preschool teacher, Central School. Justin Trout, art teacher, Central School. Dana Goldstein, grade four, Gordon, Gordon Mitchell School. Rebecca Walkup, special education teacher, Gordon Mitchell. Margaret, Margaret Driscoll, grade seven, math teacher, EB Junior Senior High School. Megan Kruger, grade eight, science teacher, East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. Want to wish them all the best of luck. A lot of them actually moved. One of them is going to higher education. The other, one of them is a brand-new mom, felt that she needed to stay home right now because they didn't have childcare. And the other one, two, three, four, four of them moved either closer to their, where they grew up, wanted to go back, closer next to their families. And one moved closer to her house. She was traveling, her distance was too much. So I wish them all the best of luck. They're all great teachers. We are gonna miss them. We filled all of their positions so far. We filled the final position today. The Megan Kruger, grade eight, science. I filled that today, and I spoke to that teacher. And she'll be coming in next week to meet with me.
Thank you. I realize why you gave me a look when I first said that. But we actually, we're gonna start with public comment before all. So my apologies. We didn't have it written down on the agenda. I feel like I'd rather the public comment. The people that are here, we're here for the open forum. So if there's something they'd like for us to know before we listen to the presentation, I think that's, that's really important. So the school committee would like to hear the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of our community. All individuals who wish to speak during the public comment period must identify themselves by name. Speakers must address the full committee through the chair and may not address individual members of the committee. The public comment period is not an open public forum. Speakers may address the following topics: topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment, or items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Each speaker will be afforded the same amount of time to speak. At the beginning of the public comment section, I will announce, well, we're actually there now. So I will announce that each speaker will have a minute and a half to read their statement, and we will have a 15-minute allotted public speaking period. No individuals may speak more than, at once at the single, at the single meeting. Speakers who exceed their allotted time will be ruled out of order. Any individual who wishes to address the committee for longer than their allotted time should submit their comments in writing to the committee either after the meeting. Remarks that are discriminatory, profane, vulgar, threatening, or harassing are not permitted. And this policy is laid out in school committee policy, BEDH. So we are going to open the floor to, Teresa will read off the list in order of who's first on the list. And once you begin speaking, you will have a minute and a half. And I will call out when you have 30 seconds left.
Lisa Lessigor.
Hi. So I just had a quick comment. My name is Lisa Lessigor. I'm a parent. I've had kids six that have passed through the school system. I'm a nurse of 22 years, recently elected to the Board of Health in the town. I firsthand dealt with the COVID population. I worked a COVID-positive unit from March until we were COVID-free in June. My main purpose in joining the task force for the school was to push towards a full open because it was my best educated assessment that that would be feasible for the town. After participating in the task force, I realized that that goal, we weren't there yet. There's a lot of guidelines that kind of held us back. So I refocused myself towards the hybrid model. It is, in my opinion, the only model that gives parents, students, and teachers a choice. It's not forcing them in. It's not forcing them home. So I'm just asking you, as a school committee, respect the fact that parents do need a choice and to respect that we chose you, and we expect you to give us a choice coming back. Thank you.
Juliana Montero.
I'm Juliana Montero. What else do I have to say? Sorry. Can you reiterate to me again?
I'm sorry?
Can you reiterate to me again what you need from me? Juliana Montero.
You're just.
Okay.
Yep, you're fine.
Well, I'm pretty involved with the PTO in my Gordon Mitchell School. I have a daughter that has chosen to leave the district for various reasons, but I'm still strongly believe in the school district here, and I still would like to be highly involved. I'm also very highly involved in my work. And one of the things that I mentioned to the superintendent is I agree on the hybrid mode. I'm very up for it, but I'm still very concerned, and I wanted to take this in consideration in a support with the community, with the parents. in a support with the community, with the parents. I think we are doing the right thing and focusing with the kids and the emotional part and the structure. But I still think that the support for the parents and preparing them for what they need to do at home is still to be discussed, I think. And I think, I believe we have a responsibility to prepare the parents for it. Not just what they need to do because they are not prepared as you all are. I myself am not prepared. I'm learning to...
30 seconds.
To become educators. But also financially and emotionally, I think all of us are in a lot of need to learn how to be as good as you all are. The government, it's offering a lot of resources. I think we could not necessarily train people to do that, but tell them where they can go and find those resources financially, emotionally. That's what we're doing in my work. I volunteer to give you all the information I have in my work, where they can go. And also, I don't know as much as in East Bridgewater, but I know, for example, in Whitman Hansen, there's a lot of people that speak different languages. I speak a different language. If you ever need translation, I offer you my volunteer time to parents that speak Portuguese. So if you ever need any student, any parents, I do that at work, too. You know, we are concerned with the level of kids and not reading this summer.
It's time.
Time. Okay.
Thank you.
So anything that you need, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
And we have Christy Layton, please.
Hi. My name's Christy Layton. I'm speaking in favor for the full back-to-school. I have two children. One is going into second grade. The other one is starting kindergarten. My kindergartner is over the moon about starting school. Can't wait to go. My second grader has a lot of social anxiety, which the teachers from Central School can agree with, with me. Socially, I think that we're doing them a disadvantage, even with a hybrid program. My kids want to see their friends. They want... My daughter wants to make new friends. And I don't feel like we can do it with a hybrid situation, especially with my son being on class. I can't take second grade again. I did that once. I took first grade last year, last spring. It was fun. But I'm totally in favor for this full-time. I'm a paramedic by trade. I've been in the front lines of COVID since day one, before we knew that it was a pandemic. And I've seen it, and I've seen what it can do to people. But I feel that...
30 seconds.
You guys have done your jobs to make it as safe as possible for not only you, but for my child. And I trust you guys with my children's lives for five days a week for most of the year. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all our public speakers. Okay, thank you. All right, before we turn it over to the superintendent for our presentation on the plan, I just want to outline the process. So Superintendent Legault will present her proposed plan to the committee. You know, we've all spent some time going over the documents Superintendent has... I'm sorry. We've all spent some time going over the documents Superintendent has sent us. I'm sure at this point, we all still have some questions. So I think what I'd like to do is, following the presentation, I'd like to open up a question-and-answer period from the committee towards the superintendent. I think we can allot a 30-minute question-and-answer period. To keep it organized, I'd like to have the committee members go through me in order, we'll recognize you to ask a question so we can keep it moving and everyone has a chance to ask. Following that, each of the members will have an opportunity to make a statement regarding their thoughts or wishes about where we are, and then we will hold a vote. Superintendent Legault, yours.
Thank you. Thank you. So since March 13th, we've been thinking about how to return to school over the summertime. Today, I do want to bring up a few things before I start our presentation. I had the principals here because I do want them to talk about their schools individually because I think that people can ask questions of me. I'm the overarching. I bring in the policies and the protocols that you asked me to do. I also lead the principals and the administration team, and then the teachers. The principals know the intricacies of their own classrooms and their schedules and what the platforms that Mr. Clements and Dr. Williams have talked about over the last couple of days with Mr. Sylvia and what they're going to be doing at the junior, senior high school. Mr. Gentile and Ms. Dupre and Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Nichols have been talking about how they would work with their teachers to make a... to do their own platforms and their robustness of the curriculum and what type of instruction they would look at. So we've had, since this beginning of the summer, we've had six task force meetings. We've had three parent... two parent forums and one roundtable. We've had a lot of discussion, and that's only with the task force, and that's with the parent forums, and that's with the roundtable. Then we've had numerous discussions with the administration team, being here. Our Zoom meeting, we had a lot of Zoom meetings in April and May and June, and then we decided that we would meet together. Today, I did see a couple of comments from the EBEA that I just would like to, first of all, thank them for their being part of the task force and being part of the solution. I know that there was a couple of things that might have been said. I think they were taken out of context. We did... They did ask me to do some things on June 25th. I have that list of the information request right here that I am working on, but it's hard to do it when I don't have a model to work on. It's also, I have spoken to Kurt Shippey throughout this process about this information request that I've received from them, and I have been writing down... I have all the answers, or most of the answers. And I have been talking to Kurt Shippey through this time about this. However, June 30th came along, and the administration team needed a break. Teachers were home at June 18th, was our last day of school. Administration team stayed till June 30th. July 4th was right next to it. We did have our first meeting on July 14th. But these guys needed a break. Everybody needs a break. So yes, did I give them a couple of weeks off and told them to stay home and said, "Go to the beach," or "Don't go to the beach, Sumalai, sorry." Do what you need to do with your family. Stay around your pool. Take a break. I did. I absolutely did. So not getting back or not doing this by July 14th, you're absolutely right. I didn't. And it is not because I don't want to. It's because I have an administration team that needs a break. And I'm going to give it to them because this is going to be hard work. And the high school principals, they work through the summer. Mr. Gentile, Mrs. Dupre, and Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Nichols, they get... Their contract is less time than the junior, senior high school principals, and they've been working as much as the high school principals have. So that's a discussion that we're going to have to have at some one point this... at the end of the summer of what we're going to do for them because they've been here every step of the way. So when people always say to me, "Well, we did this, and we did this, and we need stipends and all these things," so do them. So do they. And so, yes, I take full responsibility about not meeting till July 14th, and I take that responsibility. I also take the responsibility that last night, I was asked by the EBEA to bring in a consultant for air quality testing of each building. I was asked, I believe it was last Friday or Monday, I received that. On Monday, they asked me to get back to them on Wednesday. I called Kurt Shippey on Tuesday. On Wednesday, I got an email from the state giving me a bunch of air quality testing companies. On Thursday, yesterday, I received that we have made a call. We are bringing them in on August 11th, on Tuesday. They will begin testing all rooms in the district from a air quality specialist that is... has been approved by DESI and state government. I gave it to Kurt Shippey last night at this meeting and said that I have agreed, and we will test each room and do air quality tests. So I'm doing it as fast as I can. Mr. McGlocklin, you work in schools. It's not as easy as people think. It's not that easy. And everybody has a job here. It's not that easy to get people to come and work with you. But I'm going as fast as I can. And last night, people said, you know, "Well, when are we going to know this? And when will we know that?" You give me a model tonight. I told every one of these guys tomorrow and my entire central office staff, "Stay home tomorrow. Monday's a new day, and we begin." Whatever the choose, whatever you choose, whatever you tell me to do, we'll accept it, and we'll move forward, and we'll do it. I have heard from Mr. Shippey. I did... I was asked, "When do we start to bargain?" Mr. McGlocklin, you know this. An MOU comes from the association to the superintendent of schools. It does not come from the superintendent of schools, vice versa. We have conversations about it. Until I have a model, and until I know what that model looks like and present to Kurt, Mr. Shippey, and say, "These are some of the things that we'll be looking for from our faculty and staff," I have also heard from Elaine O'Brien, the president of the instructional assistants, that she would like to begin conversations and bargaining. Until I know the model and say, "We're doing the hybrid model. This is the model that we'll be using. These are the expectations of the district and of the individual buildings." It's hard for me to say to the union, "I want to bargain this. I need to negotiate this out. I need to have an MOU about these things." I know that Norwell, I know that Norwell School District has already done an MOU for sports. The MIA has not even come out with a schedule, nor have they decided if we will have athletics. Jeff sits on one of the principals committees. We don't know yet. I know that Norwell has done that. I spoke to Matt. He's given me the MOU if we would like to go in that direction. I can't do anything because I don't have that information. So I just want the EBEA to know. I'm very proud of the Teachers Association. I'm listening to the Teachers Association. I understand they want the remote model right now, but I also have 2,200 students. With how many parents is that? 3,400 parents. 11,000 people in this community. So it's impacting the district or the community, and I get that. We want to hope in it's safe, and if we can get this building or all buildings open safely following CDC guidelines and the DESI guidelines with the protocols and policies that you set forth for me, if we can open them in safe with half a cohort on AA days and half the cohort on B days, then we do so. If you don't feel it is safe, or no one feels that we should go in that model, then we go in a different direction. But I spent seven... Six task force meetings, starting on September... July 15th, two parent forums, a roundtable. Again, this is our... This was the second parent forum tonight, six to seven. That's probably the largest group of parents I've seen in a long time. I think it's wonderful. They're here. They're vocal. They're communicating with us. We're communicating with them. I'm going to do a better job. My administrators will do a better job of communicating this coming up in the fall. We were flying a plane just as well as the teachers were at 30,000 feet, learning how to build it and keep it fueled at 30,000 feet. So they did a great job. We know we got to do better. We're going to work on our weaknesses and make them our strengths. The task force last night had a vote. Mrs. Higgins was a parent and school committee member. Mrs. Malz was a school committee member, parent. Ellen Pennington was a school parent and a school committee member last evening. All three of them were not school committee members last night, Mr. McGlocklin. They were all parents on that team, and they could not speak for the school committee. None of them did. So I'm proud of that fact that they all kept that and spoke as parents. They were each on different teams of the task force, so they can speak to that as we go through it. One was safety, health and safety. The other was facilities, and the other one was teaching and learning. One was led by John Shea. The other was led by Karen Clifford. And the third was led by Dr. Gina Williams. The vote was taken. We thought that we would have won for all in person, but I'm very eloquently spoken tonight by a parent, a nurse, in favor of all person, said the best thing she could have said tonight is, "I gained perspective from all of the others in that room and listening that hybrid is where we are at in our vision in this district." There was 27 yays for the hybrid model. And 15...
Was there more because there was two people?
18 for remote. Mr. Shippey did say, but they were not part of the task force. Mr. Shippey did stand and say, "On behalf of the East Bridgewater Education Association, they are all in favor of the remote model." So there's been a lot of discussion on which model I favor, which model the administrators favor. The best model is in-person. There's nothing better than to have a teacher in front of a classroom speaking, working, walking around, engaging, clarifying, promoting, researching, delegating, determining, and offering perspective to students. Hands down, teachers get it. In-person is the best. Brick and mortar, being here in the auditorium this evening, seeing your faces is great. Being here, talking about it, seeing our parents out there. That's where we need to be. The next best model I can, or we can, offer is hybrid. Bringing in students for a limited time, two days a week, in-person instruction. Being able to sit next to your friend, being able to socialize, yes, with a mask on, being able to eat possibly, hopefully, in the cafeteria with a different seating arrangement. Being able to, yes, we are going to walk in one direction. I heard that last night from Mr. Clements. They are walking in one direction. That's easy to do at Central School. If you've ever been over there, it's... I love going over there because I don't get... It's not like walking out the high school. You can pretty much get down the hallway because everybody walks like this behind the... The only other person or the only other woman that has ever been able to control their son or daughter is that kindergarten, first or second grade teacher. And most of the time, it's pre-K or K. Or watching Mrs. Goram with her apron on, walk down the hallway and watching six or eight or 12 behind her waddling and holding each other's hands, which we're not going to do anymore, Mrs. Byrne, but we're going to keep a distance and walk down the hallway. Being able to be there for two days in-person, learning, talking, respecting, socializing, socializing with each other, evaluating our work, assessing what we're doing, and being able to offer feedback for two days is better than zero. On the third day, on the Wednesday, or on the third day of this hybrid model, it will be remote. It will be half-day PD for some teachers. It may be specials for other teachers. It may be a different model for some. It may be for our most at-risk students. They will be in school. Students with IEPs should be here. Students that are ELL learners should be here. Students that need us full-time, all the time, should be here. The most at-risk should be here. Pre-K, K, yes, one, two, three, four. All students are at risk, but the most at-risk, our ELL learners, our special education with IEPs, should be here. And pre-K and K should be here. On the following day, if you are in A cohort, you started out with in-person, in-person, you went to remote. On the Thursday, Friday, you are now remote. But you will also follow a schedule on that day. Mrs. Byrne will have that schedule. You saw it today up on her model. We're going to have a morning meeting, whether you're in front of me or whether you're looking at me on a screen. We're going to talk, and we're going to breathe through our nose and breathe out through our mouth. We're going to put our hands on our legs. We're going to put our feet on the floor, whether you're in front of me or on a screen. We're going to breathe in, and we're going to breathe out. And then we're going to start our day respectfully. And that was an unexpected behavior. Or that is an expected behavior, and we're happy that you did that today. That's what I hear at Central School, not only in remote, but I'm going to hear it in person. At the high school and at the Mitchell School, we've talked about this. Everybody knows Ms. Dupre in the morning. "Good morning, everybody. Let's start this day off great." Whether you are in person or whether you are at home, you will hear Mrs. Dupre every day. "Good morning. How are you? How do you feel today? Check in with me. I'll be around." "The sun came up. The rain is out, but it's all right. It's a new day." Even when it rains, it's a new day. And everybody loves to see Mr. Gentile when it comes to the cafeteria. He's the high-five captain. He knows everything about the Patriots. And that's his job to walk around and to make sure the teachers are on time, to make sure the teachers have lessons that are rigorous and engaging. and engaging, whether they're in school or whether they are behind a screen, that what we're going to offer is engaging. And at the high school, and every day, the pledge of allegiance will be done. We didn't do it in the spring. We're going to do it in the fall. It's important. Kids need rituals, and we need routines, and we need to start to respect the flag and our partners all over this world, because everybody does matter, and we have many children's parents who are in their own forces. We need to do that every day. I have talked to Mrs., I've talked to this administrative team. It will be done at the high school. So I'm hoping some of the high school students who like to sleep late will still stand up with their white, black socks on and their shorts and their tank tops and do the pledge of allegiance. They don't have to turn their video on for that. We start the day off together, whether you're at home or whether you're in front of us. The rigor that will come from the high school and the junior, senior high school and the Mitchell School and the, and the Central School will be the rigor that they deserve, the academic supports that are needed. I heard tonight that we missed out on some guidance, social workers, adjustment counselors, behavioral specialists. We missed some opportunities to engage with students when they were home. We're not going to do that again. We can't do that again. I don't want traumatized students, and I certainly don't want kids that feel angst, and I don't want kids that don't want to come here, and I don't want children or parents to think that they need to go to a different district because they're not engaged at East Bridgewater. That's not, that's not what I want. I want them to feel at home here. They're loved. The model is hybrid. I want to give a quick synopsis. We'll start with the Central School. I'm going to ask Kate to come up and, Kiara, I'm just going to ask you to move a little bit. I'm going to have Mrs. Byrne come up, talk about the Central School, what her model looks like, what she, what she envisions it will be. Kate, I'm just going to move my mic, and we'll wipe it off. And then you're going to, yep, I'm going to bring your chair right up. We'll listen to Central School, then we'll go to Mitchell School, and then we'll go to the high school. Kate?
Hello. As far as explaining the hybrid at Central School, thank you. Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. At Central School, we had the visual that went up. I'm not sure if you all had an opportunity to see it.
They have it in the back.
Okay, perfect. So our vision is that in the hybrid, if you're in person or at home, as Superintendent's already mentioned, we're envisioning that all students will start the day together with a teacher-led morning meeting via a Google Meet. Opportunity to connect, meet each other, and build community, especially if we're not having an opportunity for all students to be together in person. We still need to establish a classroom environment, our routines, our expectations, and we want to be able to still do that together. So we're going to do that remotely and in person at the same time. The expectation, obviously, is that the students that are in, say, Cohort A would be here on Monday and Tuesday and have the teacher in person. Cohort B would be remote those days. The lessons and the plans for those days would be similar. It would be the same if you're in person or at home. The end of the day, on the days that we'd be in person and have remote opportunities on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, all students at Central School would have a closing circle meeting, which would be typically at the end of the day or close to the end of the day, depending on the schedule. Again, a time for the class to get together, regroup, how did your day go? Still, again, focusing on building community and social, emotional relationships and letting us know that it's okay to talk about what went well today and maybe what didn't go so well and how we can kind of do better tomorrow. Those opportunities also allow the teacher to sort of preview the expectations for the next day for both groups. We are also anticipating that throughout the remote learner's day, there may be additional opportunities to be connected with the in-person learning happening in the class. That would depend on the grade and appropriate nature of that, but again, it might be an opportunity to join a mini lesson, to launch math, or a mini lesson for reading, or a small group reading instruction, but that would depend. We do know, we did hear that this evening, you know, for some families, the synchronous, the live opportunities were well received. Some wanted more. They wanted more interaction with the teacher to help facilitate the learning for their child. What we also heard is for some families, that's a challenge, because they want some flexibility in their schedule. Just to let you know, we will do our best to meet the needs of all families. So our expectation of trying to provide more live synchronous learning for all students is still our priority, so that way they have more instructional opportunity with that teacher, whether they're right in front of them or they're on a screen. But we do recognize that for some families, that may not be feasible when their child is remote. We understand that. We'll be flexible and we'll work with families on an individual basis. Any questions so far about the hybrid model? Obviously, a lot of consideration and safety precautions will be put into place in all three buildings. That would, again, include, you know, multiple mask breaks for students. You're sanitizing when you come into school, when you leave, before you go to recess and lunch after both of those opportunities. And in, at Central School, you do eat in your classroom. You have snack in your classroom, and our expectation would be that in order to minimize movement around the building, for students to have lunch in their classroom as well. That way, we can control movement, we can minimize traveling throughout the building, which we think is probably the safest measure for us. When it comes to, say, recess time, we do want students to have the opportunity to go out. We will designate areas on the playground. We call those zones. So each classroom would have a designated zone on a given day, and they'd be staying within that, you know, parameter. So we'd mark that on the playground for them. We'd provide visual maps for staffing as well. We would need to hire some additional recess monitors to assist with that. Our special area teachers also do help us monitor recess. That would still be the case, but we'd want some more supervision on the playground at that time. We are also recommending that the recess be 30 minutes in length. That does include transition time, and that is really for contractual obligation for classroom teachers to have their 30-minute lunch, because it's best if in the classroom that the teacher's the one supervising the lunchtime, so that way the recess time is when we'd have other staff supervising students. Those would also be opportunities for mask breaks. As far as arrival and dismissal, we obviously need to make some modifications to accommodate social distancing. So if in the hybrid model, the benefit here is we don't have the whole school. So when you think about our morning drop-off, anybody that's familiar with Central School knows that it can be congested. We have done several things over the last several years to minimize that. We, our entry bell is 8:50. We allow our walkers to come in at 8:40. We've done that for the last several years. And we also have the one-directional, everybody needs to take a right, which was a change for many. But that has improved traffic flow and minimized the congestion in our parking lot as well as out on Central Street. So anticipating that we'll probably have more students being dropped off at school, if we only have half the population coming, it could still mimic what a full day would normally look like, or it might be a little bit more. But I'm confident, based on the procedures we've already put into place, that we'll be able to mitigate and manage that safely. We would still have staff help students out of their vehicles, and that way we can slow and monitor social distancing and making sure that we don't have, you know, a lock jam at any given door as far as those students being dropped off. In regards to busing, we would just, we would stop and not let as many students off the bus and empty as many buses at the same time. Typically, in the past, if you have five buses, we unload five buses. So now we wouldn't do that. We would start one at a time and stagger. We have staff outside as well as in the hallway to monitor social distancing and directionals and decals on the floor that we will have to help them monitor their space. That is also, when you think about it in reverse, for dismissal time, we would stagger dismissal for our walker population. Our kindergarten, they would be dismissed out the side exit, which we typically have done with that red roof is. Kindergarten would still, the walkers would be picked up over there. Our first graders, we would have them dismiss at our 2:55 bell. So again, just first grade walkers coming out the red ramp and being monitored by staff in the hallways as well as upon their exit. And second graders, we would have them come out last at approximately 3:05. Our dismissal is really three. 3:05, I feel like a good 10 minutes we'd need to have go by, so that way families could safely return to their vehicles if they did not have a second grader, and to kind of get out of the way, so that way we can avoid congestion. We will also print signs for all families that are picked up to help them kind of like, you know, here you are, almost like if you're at the airport, you know, a little Viking symbol, and here's your sign, just to help mitigate the need to congest and to come close to one another, that we can clearly see which child belongs to which adult and easily make that transition. As far as our preschool, preschool, again, they would still come through the modular parking lot. Their arrival would be pretty typical to what we've done before. We would just encourage families to maintain that six-foot social distancing, and we would have staff members that would come to the gate and escort students inside like we have typically done in the past. We, again, for dismissal, would provide those signs for families, and we'll stagger the amount of classes coming out at the end of the day for preschool, just so that we don't overcrowd the area. And once we establish that, we would communicate to families which class was coming out first, so they can anticipate, oh, here's the first teacher. I know that this is going to be pre-KC, for example. They would know to come out at that time, just to avoid too many people in that one Other, any questions or anything more you'd like me to get in depth with?
Are you going to be moving on to the remote portion?
Sure, would you like me to?
Sure.
Sure. On the full remote plan, again, full remote, we would like to start the same way, as far as everybody, obviously, would be in a morning meeting. We'd end the day with that closing circle for all. What we'd like to see, if we're fully remote, is that we know that we want teachers to have a combination of asynchronous and synchronous learning. Synchronous is that live, asynchronous is the video. So in our plan, we would propose and anticipate that we'd have the flexibility of being able to offer small group instruction synchronously live for students in the area of literacy and in math. And not to say that we still couldn't do those opportunities at, say, Science and Social Studies, but we know that we would definitely expect that we'd be embedding that in a remote plan. What we would, again, need to be flexible for those families that, for whatever reason, if they can't join our day, and I know the Department of Ed says, you know, families need to show up to school and be there like the school day. We do know it's five hours of learning. In the spring, with the model that we had, we know before we only had to worry about, you know, half-day. Now it's five hours of instruction. And so I do understand that at our level, I think we're all pretty clear, that when you have students that are aged pre-K to 2, somebody needs to be near them to help facilitate what is going on. So no matter how much we provide for families, somebody needs to be able to be there to assist and help, and students are going to have questions, because that's how students learn. So not that we're trying to make the parent or that caregiver be the teacher, but the reality of that situation is if a student has a question, somebody needs to be there to answer it. So our hope, though, is by increasing more synchronous live opportunities with the teacher, the teachers be able to be there to answer those questions, to facilitate the learning, and they can learn amongst each other. And that would definitely improve what we had via the springtime. For families that can't access that, because perhaps their child's in a situation where they can't learn at the exact same time and be online at the exact same time, we would be flexible. We would do our best to meet the needs of that family and those particular students. We do know we do have to have attendance. We are required to take attendance every day, and our grading also needs to be consistent and what we typically would do versus the pass fail, and the superintendent talked about that earlier today. So all of those factors, we would still need to take into effect. And, but ultimately, again, just like we always do, we try our best to individualize what we do for the best interest of the students and what works best for them and what they need. And I also want to be clear, too, it came up earlier this evening with some questions, students on individual education plans, if you are on an IEP, your IEP directs what your service delivery would look like and sound like, and you can expect that in this fall, whether we are remote or in a hybrid, that whatever the service is on that IEP, your child will receive. So days that they are remote, let's say, for example, if your child has five times 30 for English Language Arts, let's say that means they have 30 minutes each day for the English Language Arts instruction, Monday through Friday, they will receive that. So when they're in person, they will get that in person, and when they're remote, they are going to get that remotely. There's our obligation, that's what that will look like. It was unclear in the spring. It was muddy. I will say that service providers worked really hard to provide plans, but a lot of it was asynchronous or opportunities and accommodations for families, you know, try this, try that, which are wonderful and helpful and inclusive settings. However, we know that if you require specific, direct, implicit instruction by a service provider, that you will still, you will get that. You deserve that. And our service providers have received training in that area, because that was also a concern of theirs in the springtime, because in all honesty, right, we have right to privacy. If a student has a disability, we're not sharing that with other people. And if you have a small group of instruction, you are now identifying that this student has a disability to everybody else who's on that Google Meet or Zoom call. So that was part of the hesitation, not wanting to make sure that, yes, we were doing right by students and families, but not violating students' rights to confidentiality and privacy. So that was a huge, you know, conundrum for many providers in the spring. They wanted to do the right thing, but they didn't want to jeopardize the student's right to privacy. Would you like more information?
I'm fine.
I have just one question. And if anybody applies to all of these, I'll be here. Have we reached out or is there any thought about reaching out to PSU, maybe for some teaching students that could help any pods or remote learners or whatever, when we need it? Like, not that we would be responsible for it, but if we could just make those connections.
We do have the partnership with Bridgewater State University. I have not reached out to them in regard to that. They've reached out to me about wanting to play student teachers with us still for the fall. As far as opportunity to expand that partnership, I think if we have a direction and opportunity, it's something we definitely should look into, and they're a great partner, so there's potential.
Yeah, they have contacted us, and we've said that we would take, we have a partnership with them, as Kate said, and we said that, yes, we are interested in still taking student teachers, absolutely.
But then could we even hook up with?
We can. We just were told by, we just were told by DESI today that, that teachers that are in the program of student teaching, we can bring in now, and they can start to sub as long as, you know, there's mentorship and this and that, so. It'd be good.
And for as long as our program is in place, we both have student interests, it's an opportunity to assist.
Are you continuing with the North River program, Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Thank you, Faith.
Thank you.
Just, this is not specific for, for Byrne, but just in general, in listening to a lot of the parent feedback over the last weeks and the task force, et cetera, it seems as though there's an opportunity, especially if we go full remote or even hybrid, to perhaps look at our more at-risk students and those students on IEPs and maybe partner more so with their parents, because their needs may shift and be different in a remote learning environment. For example, my child has ADHD and numbering the pages, that would have helped. Well, I wouldn't necessarily think of that, and, you know, that's, that's something that the parent was able to identify out of a frustration of working with their child, so it's no fault of anyone. I think there's just opportunity to provide additional support by talking to the parents. And, okay, this remote world, whether it's hybrid or full remote, is going to look different for your child, and they already need support, but our supports might need to be different because of being, I mean, it's hard enough to support a child who doesn't have an IEP just to keep them engaged remote learning. So there, I think that brings a whole different nuance that I think we really can take an opportunity to look at.
Absolutely, and we can always add accommodations and identify them. That process never closes or never ends. A parent, a teacher, anybody can open that door at any time for a student on IEP, 504. Even students in the general education population have the right to curriculum accommodations.
Do you have any questions from Mrs. Byrne before we?
Just a quick one.
Yes.
In regard to how much access students, a big part of being in school is being able to do eyeball, eyeball tests, just to be sure that they're being cared for.
Correct.
In a remote environment, we have an mechanism, I guess, is the question's wrong. Is there any kind of mechanism in place to maintain reliable from students?
When they're remotely or at home?
Yeah, I'm reminded, we're not physical, but that'd be corporate.
A great question. I do know, and I can speak to what we did in the spring and what we can still do to improve that come the fall. We did do, with adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, and the school psychologists at Central School, reach out to individual families, setting up individual Google Meets and Zoom sessions, as well as group Zoom sessions, following up phone calls, following up if students have outside therapists or counselors, cross-referencing all of those. Also dealing with outside agencies, you know, that's something that we also did even in the springtime. So families that might have been, be involved with, you know, DCF or other South Bay therapies, we were definitely in touch with those. I know the superintendent mentioned some really creative opportunity, perhaps, to be able to do some wellness checks at the home. We did use SRO and other officers in the springtime to also help with some wellness checks, to check in on families. We were providing food, technology, phone calls, you know, are always a great first step. Not that we always get contact with families that way, but we definitely try. Beyond that, I'm open for additional suggestions, since the superintendent might have some, as well as the other principals.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
So then, we're still going to have our summer, the fall, right?
We have two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gentile, welcome.
Thank you. First, I just want to touch on a couple of the comments that just came up, and then I'll go through some of the things that are specific and in particular, maybe a little[1789.98] And then I'll go through some of the things that are specific, in particular, maybe a little different at Mitchell than at Central, because there are a lot of similarities between the schools and the plans. With regard to checking in, having eyeballs on students, so on and so forth, similarly, we relied, I can say at the Mitchell School, we relied heavily on the teachers to say, "Hey, I've, you know, I've been doing a live Zoom all these days, and I haven't seen so-and-so." Or, "We've been looking for assignments to come in by X date, and for the last two weeks, this particular student, we haven't heard from." I've, you know, the teachers in the interim had, you know, reached out to parents via email, via phone calls, you know, so on and so forth, still didn't have any success, and then we would step in. So it might be myself making a phone call or reaching out to a parent, Mrs. Dupre doing that. Our guidance counselors were very involved in that. So, you know, we kind of counted on the teachers to be the front line, and they, in many cases, had made several attempts with kids that maybe they were concerned with, that they hadn't seen them with regularity. And if it got to that point, then we would take those additional steps. And we would continue to do that if we, if we do, you know, obviously, if we're going with a hybrid or if we're in full remote, then, you know, there'll be some component of having to continue that. With respect to parents and things that maybe parents are noticing and suggestions and things of that nature, or if parents are having difficulty or seeing their kids having difficulty, what I would ask, and I think I can speak to the other principals, is that parents reach out to us. I have heard about a lot of frustration, but I can honestly tell you, I was directly contacted by, I think, three or four families. And I was responsive to them, and I would be responsive to anyone that I knew that there may be a potential issue. What I can tell you about myself and about my colleagues that are up here on the stage, my partner, Mrs. Dupre, were very reflective practitioners. You know, do I think that my staff put in their best effort and that we did as well? Absolutely. Do I think that when we go back in any remote capacity, that it's going to be improved? Without question, and I know my staff would say the same thing. They're unbelievable, they're excellent educators, but as we've all said along the way, everyone was learning this, learning to do it and doing it at the same time. Now people have had some opportunity. I think we're still going to need to have opportunities for the teachers, and that's why the commissioner built in those days to get training, to look at the curriculum, what do we need to do differently if we're in a hybrid format, to make that work well for kids and for families. And I'm very confident that we can, that we can do that. So with that said, I just want to quickly touch on a couple of things with regard to, with regard to the Mitchell Plan. One of the things that, with respect to the hybrid, a typical day of school for a student that's in the building would be a pretty much a typical day of school with less students in the building and less students in the classroom. Depending on the number of students that we ultimately end up with on a particular day, we would be looking to use the cafeteria for lunches to try and maximize that space. If, dependent upon the number of students and the guidelines that are in place, if we need to explore other opportunities for students to eat, places like the cafeteria, outside, alternative spaces in the building, we've already begun to identify those areas in the event that we need it. But I would expect for students to travel to the cafeteria. Again, with protocols and guidelines in place that will be a huge priority for us when we return to go through all of those with kids and make sure they're clear and comfortable. With regard to students in a hybrid model that are home on a given day, my vision is that they will follow a typical schedule with respect to their classes. There will be a component of those classes that would either be, that will be instructional, and it may be synchronous instruction with the classroom teacher, potentially from the classroom, or it may be asynchronous instruction from the teacher that maybe was pre-recorded or pulled from another resource. But I would expect for students, even if they're at home during the hybrid format, to follow a typical schedule. And that would include, if they had a specials class that met from 10:10 to 11 o'clock on the days that they're in school, that would be what it would look like for them. Now, what I can tell you, though, is I, a lot of the feedback that I heard was that families were looking for that structure. But even tonight, we heard, we need flexibility, too. So I'm going to be soliciting information from families and from my staff and try to formulate something that, you know, will work for everyone or that can be flexible enough that it meets everyone's needs and provides the structure that I think a lot of families are looking for, but doesn't put so much structure in place that a family that's having difficulty navigating is going to end up being penalized for it. Do I have all of those details hashed out right here, right now? I don't. I am working around the clock to prepare for those things, and I will continue to do that until whenever the first day of school is. I have, I feel like I have a good vision on the things that we do need to establish, but we need to have the plan in place. Then I can begin my process of communicating with the people. It's important to establish the things at the building level. But I do intend for the rigor of the program to be increased, for students to be accountable every single day, and teachers to be in contact with their students every single day. So that's, that's a hybrid. You know, with regard to the full, a full, potential full remote model, again, trying to find that balance between structure, having a schedule, having all of your classes meet each day, but also trying to accommodate those families and those students that that may not work for, because we know there's a lot of conditions that are impacting families, particularly if everyone is home. You know, if everybody in a given household is home and they have to follow a schedule and the challenges of that, I certainly understand that having three school-aged children of my own, and my wife's an educator, I mean, we really could appreciate the juggle that was going on in the spring. So we're reflective, we'll be listening to families in terms of the things that are priorities for them based on what the model does look like, and then that will be our target to meet moving forward. I don't, I don't necessarily want to reiterate things that are common, but if anybody has any particular questions to Mitchell, happy to answer them. Seeing none? Thank you all, appreciate it.
I'm going to ask Mr. Clemens to come up. Mr. Sylvia is here. Bill did the presentation last night. Jeff, you want to come up and sit with him, but Bill did the presentation last night, and they talked about it today, and they felt that Bill's already run through it once, so let him go through it again, because he's got it. He knows some of the questions that were coming up, and I know they did a little work today with Dr. Williams and Jeff going back over it. So, no slight against Mr. Sylvia, it's just we felt that he's done it, he's got, he's got it under his wings now.
Again, thank you for having me, I'm Bill Clemens, I'm the new AP, and I did say this last night, that there, I can't think of a better way to bring a new administrator up to speed and learn everything that is going on here. So a lot of the material has been covered by Central and Mitchell School. Probably the biggest thing that's unique to the junior, senior high schools is the schedule and what that would potentially look like, because obviously, you're going to have students and teachers and a lot more movement and a lot more classes and things of that sort. The things that are the same from the other schools would still be a Cohort A and Cohort B, where students would be in the building Monday and Tuesday, obviously, everyone remote Wednesday, and then at home on Thursday, Friday. One of the things that we have actually learned in communicating with other principals of other high schools and junior highs and middle schools is they're actually striving to get to the schedule that East Bridgewater already has, which really kind of put a smile on our face, in that the block scheduling, where there's eight classes, in any two-day grouping, no matter whether you are at home for those two days or you're in the building for those two days, you will see and meet with all of your teachers. It will be four classes one day, and it will be four classes another day. So the schedule is pretty similar to that, if you look at that hybrid schedule that's in your packet, with two exceptions. We increased the number of lunches, as Superintendent Legault said, lunch drives, you know, many things. But the number of lunches was increased so that we can maintain safe distancing. We're going to have a lot of additional spacing, we already have some outside seating, we're getting more, we're going to have tents. But with approximately 500 kids in the building on any given day, dividing it up, that allows us a slight margin of error for safety. In order to do that, we shaved a few minutes off of the other three periods in the day and added them to the lunch block. But over the course of the cycle, it's going to be the same number of minutes of instruction per class, per cycle, per week. So that's one difference there. The other, in terms of trying to meet the needs of everyone, teachers, staff, and students for what that half day on Wednesday looks like, we have already, we're in the early stages of discussion, but two things that we are proposing would be, on that half day, potentially meeting with every class on that day. So all eight periods, A through H, would meet. It's going to be approximate, not approximate, it would be 22 minutes per class. And what that would do would really afford an opportunity for a check-in and things of that sort. Staying on that check-in thing, obviously, we don't have morning meetings at the junior, senior high school, but we are going to have announcements, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we've already learned a lot in talking to, to the Mitchell Plans and to the Central Plans in terms of having moments at the start of each class where, whether you are live in person or with the teacher, you're going to have the same number of minutes. And again, it's all a conversation with the teachers to figure out what works best. We don't, as a former high school teacher myself, there was nothing worse than having something done to you without that input, so we want to speak to that. But one plan would be all eight periods in one day to check in. The other plan would be four periods on one Wednesday, and then the other four periods on the next Wednesday, and rotate back and forth. Truthfully, we see merits to both plans and to both ideas, but those would be two things that we would be entertaining. And again, they're not the only two plans, it's not the end-all, be-all. If Mr. Sylvia and I hear of something better than those two, well, then that's what we'll, we'll propose to move forward with. There's a little bit more, but are there questions specific to the schedule that I can answer? Because I know it can be a little difficult.
Well, a couple things. First of all, I just want to say, I was so happy to hear that comment last night, here and again, that the schedule that we worked so hard to get into place
Yes.
is now what all these other districts are wanting to happen, because it was, we got it, so that's definitely a good thing. And, Mr. Sylvia, I had emailed you this as a parent, and I'm just going to express it again because I know a lot of parents feel this way, and administration knows. I really hope, whether it's hybrid or full remote, which I have concerns about full remote for many reasons,
Sure.
it's inevitable that we probably might move to it at some stage of this educational journey this year. But accountability, both for the students, the teachers, and the parents.
Mm-hmm.
Personally, for me, my boys are very self-motivated, and I didn't really, aside from getting, my older one out of bed every morning, which was almost impossible, but, you know, getting the work done wasn't a problem. But I know I heard frustration from a lot of parents, not knowing if their kids were getting the work done. Sure, they were maybe up and on their Chromebook, but I know for a fact, I went down to the basement several times, and the Chromebook was on, but so wasn't the video game.
Sure.
But, but grades weren't a concern, so I was just like, you know, I'll go with it. But that's not the case for every parent, and they were looking for grades, and grades weren't necessarily being posted. And then it was this last minute, oh my goodness, all this work is being done. So I really know that everyone's working hard to build rigor in all levels of this, you know, whatever school it is, and whether it's hybrid or full remote. But accountability, I see, because honestly, we're going to put all our kids at risk. If we can't develop rigor and accountability, and I have a senior, so I'm very concerned. And he's doing well, and, you know, this, this year is going to be great, and we're going to make it great no matter what. But I do think we are at this pivotal point where we could really put our kids at risk if we don't find that rigor and accountability.
Absolutely. I can speak to that, and some of the things are coming, being decided for us from Desi, that we are taking attendance, we're going to be monitoring that. Mr. Sylvia and I were talking today about, and we have a method, and we don't get into all the details, although we're happy to, about what attendance will look like on remote days, what attendance will look like on the in-person days, what constitutes being there. Grades need to happen, how that needs to work. And one of the things that I was going to wrap up with, but I think now's a good time, is continuity is key in what we are looking for. We want that continuity to be there. A month in, I can already speak to some of the things that have impressed me about the rigor and about the academic nature of East Bridgewater. But as Superintendent Legault said, things can be better, and that's our job to look, to take that feedback and see where and how. One of the things that we are going to be stressing is that we want classes to be similar, very close, if not even closer, in terms of, you know, I think I said it yesterday, an Algebra I class, or a sophomore English class, or a Spanish III class, so that one teacher to another teacher to another teacher, or now, remote to hybrid to in-person to fully remote in Cohort C, students are getting the same experiences, they're getting the same feedback. We're going to be taking a look at assessments and things of that sort, too. And frankly, East Bridgewater is not going to be on an island. Superintendent Legault is not the only one that is working, she's doing a dynamite job of what's working in other districts and what's not. And once the school year starts, no matter what it looks like, we're going to be talking with other administration. Every, not every, but, you know, towns and schools and parents have these worries and have these concerns, and we are dealing with this together. And we are not so proud that if we hear of something dynamite that's going on in a nearby town, we're going to do our best to bring it in, but we very much are hearing that feedback loud and clear.
And I did post this early on, and I know a lot of this will come as the plan is determined, and everything's in place and all of that. But I really, really, as a parent, and I think I'm speaking for a lot of parents, I really would like to see how guidance is going to be incorporated into this, how they're going to support our kids, both socio-emotionally, but especially our seniors. And yes, I have seniors, so I am doubly vested in this.
Sure.
But they're looking at trying to navigate
Yes.
college landscape
Yes.
that is so bizarre and so unknown, and I really think this is a great opportunity for our guidance department to show.
So you're stealing a little bit of my thunder that I was hoping to bring to you. But we, we've got some meetings scheduled already and some soliciting. Again, going back to soliciting ideas and talking with other districts in terms of what are, what are you doing with your guidance department? What is staying the same, what is moving? And the first thing that came up, and I swear I was going to say this anyway, was reassuring and working with parents of seniors. What does the fall of senior year look like in this COVID era? What is going to be the same? What is going to be different? What guidance do students and families need for the application? And not just the college application process, but for the post-secondary planning process in general. College is a big scary thing, but whether that's in a student's future, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, the year after high school is such a huge year for everyone. But working with those families and, and frankly, learning to, staying in constant communication with the college board, figuring out what works, sitting in on those webinars, seminars, and then finding ways to bring that information, not just to families, not just to students, but to teachers as well. Because you know what, it's going to be coming up in those classrooms. What do you think is going to be happening? It's senior year English as they're, they're talking, you know, and whether it's tips for an essay or tips for what remains the same, or the ways that the Common Application is going to be tweaked, that's a big part, as well as a lot of the talk of social, emotional learning support, coming up with FAQ documents that our behavior specialists can work with teachers so that we can try to be as helpful as we can, but between Mr. Sylvia, Ms. Anderson, myself, we know the question's going to come up. It's three days in, and I can't get Johnny to turn on his camera, what do I do? That's important, but there's not going to be one of those questions. So it's going to be working with and supporting our teaching staff as well to figure out how can we get to the front lines and anticipate some of it, you know, and some of those challenges. And then we'll be continuing to move from there. But again, that's, that's the feedback that we're hearing, and we've already putting some wheels in place. So now the guidance counselors that are watching have a little bit of advanced knowledge of what, what we're going to be talking about. No problem.
Sorry, I'm going to make you get into it, I'm so sorry. Can you talk a little bit about the attendance and how that's going to happen and be monitored at junior, senior high school?
I can be, I can offer some specificity, but frankly, it is a work in progress, and we're working with our tech specialists across the district. I don't know how familiar everyone is with Google Classroom and add-ons that have been built, and that's something that Google has been working around the clock on throughout the summer, and that's a platform that we already do have in place. And teachers and students are familiar with it, at least at the junior, senior high school. And so that's one of the add-ons there is an attendance feature. There's a few things
What's it called?
An add-on to Google Classroom. I don't know what it's called yet, but when we find out, we'll make sure to, we'll make sure to share it with you. I do know that that's going to be our primary vehicle.
I'm selfishly making notes for you.
Oh, I get it. And it's even as silly as things like Zoom was getting a lot of credit for having a more interactive whiteboard than Google Classroom was. Well, you better believe that Google was hearing that feedback as well, is looking to work on that, as well as other things like giving a master mute button to teachers, which was not always an option there. Students, or sometimes parents, had the ability to mute and unmute. Again, we don't want to censor the creative thought, but sometimes, you know, you need that space. But that's going to be our primary vehicle and something that we're working on in terms of that. And then we are going to have to marry how we're going to get that day-to-day attendance reporting. The attendance, the Pledge of Allegiance, those things, you've got the morning attendance, the period attendance, what it looks like, and then reporting it out for our school. out for our school, because the district is going to be beholden to reporting that attendance data as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have a question?
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
On a side note, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet everyone.
And hopefully, at a future meeting, we can more formally greet you.
Ordinarily, I'd shake hands, thank you.
Welcome to East Bridgewater.
Thank you.
I think just to end on that, you, you heard from the experts, they drive the buildings, we drive the district. I think the schools themselves have great leadership in all, six of them, along with their teacher leadership teams and the facilitators. I know that we are all looking at doing better models, and we're all looking at communicating more with our parents. We know that we've got to do a better job with the guidance side of it, and it's not just guidance, it's, it's, it's that social emotional well-being of a child, whether it's adjustment counselors, whether it's the guidance counselor themselves, or behavior specialists, or a teacher, you know, or even helping a parent understand how to talk to a child. I know that Mrs. Clifford, last year, had the parent meetings, and they talked a lot about that in a couple of those meetings, is how do we, how do we talk to kids, and how do you talk to your own child? You know, you think you know them, and you think you know what's going on with them, and you think you understand, but, because your kid doesn't like you anyway, so you've got to figure out how to make a, how to have a conversation with them when you get home. But-
Social emotional training.
And we do, and you do what?
Social emotional training.
Yeah, and we do social emotional training with the staff as well. The, and, and I wanted to bring that up, with the extra 10 days of the professional development, we're going to do a lot of this work. Dr. Williams isn't with us tonight, but she did, she has been really, she, she does a great job as, as the leader and as my partner here in the district. She's working on a tremendous PD, robust 10-day model. And not to, not to give it all away, but the things that were talked about here tonight, she's engaging the nurses, the nurses are going to take a front row of leadership, which we don't often see, we just usually have them come in, and they used to, you know, watch the video, infectious disease or what, you know, what do we watch, you know, if the kid gets sick, you've got to do this, or. They're getting, they need to take a front row, and they should take a front row, and they should be acknowledged for what they do every day. And we take it for granted that we have five RNs in the district. And we may, we'll get another one, and we hope to get a couple of CNAs, and we work with the, with the, the Future Nurses of America program, we have some kids here that we're working with Massa Soyet, and I hope to have those kids come back and help us. So we have a lot of those, and we, we have a lot of training for teachers, but we also, Dr. Williams, is being thoughtful about those trainings for parents. How do we train parents? How do we, how do we work with parents? We're not training you, we're working with you. We want to communicate with you and help you support. We also, the principals talked about working with the students, about how to show them how to use a platform on the remote learning, and how do we do PD with kids if they're not in the building 10 days prior to school? How do we get those kids involved? You know, when you say, hey, September 16th is our opening day, but could you, could you join a, a webinar with Mrs. Dupre to talk about how you're going to get on in the morning, and how you're going to follow your classes through in a Mitchell School Day? So those are the things that we're, we're promoting and that we're working on. We, I feel confident that we have the team to do it, I feel confident that we have the school committee to support it, I feel confident that the, our financials are in place to do it. We, you know, some questions were asked last night, you know, do you have HVA say, I mean, thank goodness for the PTA, the PTO at Central School last year, they bought air conditioners for each of the rooms. I mean, that's huge. You know, that's something that we, that, I mean, now, the forethought, or back then, you know, it was just great, because the kids were hot and sweaty hair was against their foreheads, and then all the boys got buzz cuts in, in June, and, and little girls had their hair up every day. Now it's a little bit more comfortable on the second floor. We've got a new boiler system over there, so we're not, we're not baking in Septa, we're not baking in October on the first floor when they turn that thing on, and then it, you know, throws that steam out there. The Mitchell School, we're talking about looking at some HVA systems for different areas to keep it cooler. We're looking at tents to go outside at the Central School, the Mitchell School, and the high, junior, senior high school, for outdoor classroom space, for outdoor eating areas. Mrs. Byrne is looking at, and the Mitchell School, we're looking at buying yoga mats for every student, so they can have their own learning space if they go outside, or if they go to the gymnasium, or wherever they are, they can sit on a yoga mat, and it's their yoga mat, and that's their space, and that would give them space. Kate also, Mrs. Byrne also has some great ideas about like hula hoops, you know, putting a hula hoop around a young child, that's their area, and your area's over there, and that hula hoop. So they're thinking outside the box. It's making me and Dr. Williams think outside the box. I know that Karen is talking to other districts and finding out what other districts are doing. You know, I spoke to your superintendent today, Tim, we actually have been speaking every day, because West Bridgewater and East Bridgewater are so close, and I used to speak to Dr. Oakley on a daily basis as well. Of course, Peter Schaefer up in Abington, we spoke with him this morning. Bridgewater, Rainham, we're all thinking outside the box, because it's the only thing we have right now. Having students home is a difficult situation for kids and parents. They need us, we need them, we need our teachers here, we need our kids here. I hear the angst from our teachers, and I hear the angst from our parents. I support and I recommend the task force, and recommend the hybrid model be put on the floor tonight for a vote for the East Bridgewater Public Schools for the school year of 2020, 21. And if we can get into the full in-person by January, without, without combining church and state, God bless us, and I hope that we're there. If we can't, and we go to full remote, God bless us again, because we're going into something that nobody wants to go to again. So I recommend the hybrid model for East Bridgewater Public Schools.
Thank you. That was incredibly thorough, and obviously, a lot of hard work. And so before we open it up to questions, I, I just want to quickly recognize, you know, it's, it's, the, the community has been very vocal over the last few weeks and months, and people are worried, people are concerned, I think all of them have every reason to be. I, I just want to commend you and your team, because what's going on behind the scenes, I don't think it's very easy for the public to see. You know, it was very publicly released on June 15th, or the week of June 15th, come up with three plans. And what I've seen go on behind the scenes in terms of the interaction with Desi has been an insane process, where they put out these mandates and then waited three or four weeks before they gave us any guidance about what those plans should look like. It's, it's been like trying to fill up a glass of water by turning the tap on, so it drip, drip, drips. And they fully are acknowledging that some of their guidance is going to change, even after our deadlines, which, you know, from working within this process, isn't a completely insane way to try to come up with a plan. So given those restraints, and understanding the timeline that you've been working under, I just want to commend your team, I want to commend you, and, and I know that this, these decisions you made were not easy. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Questions from, from the group?
Oh, yeah. Real quick, could you talk a little bit about any budget impacts relative to hybrid or zip off? For, for remote, we have the technology, but also for buses, where hybrid would be supplying classrooms, and the teachers would have to be in technology. Just remind, deploy your vast, and restrict us either for the coming year, or for the future.
First of all, Mr. Shea is not here tonight, because we figured we'd stick with the model. Couple of things, number one, financially, I think that we're in a good shape, as of right now, knock on wood. We're very disciplined as a school district when it comes to finances and buying and doing things. We're very lucky that, well, whether it's luck or not lucky, because some districts are not working well with their towns right now from the Plymouth County CARES Act money, some towns aren't just releasing it to their school districts, where the school districts are going, they're saying, hey, you got $225 per student, that's my money, that's an extra $500,000, I want that money. I haven't had that problem with Mr. Noble. I go up there on a weekly basis right now. Mr. Shea is talking with the, with their finance team all the time. We've set up a COVID account, I know that Joanne Benner talks about it all the time, that there's a COVID account that she has to put in the numbers, so when it goes up there. Before, Desi was making us, anything that was in, for COVID response, we had to have a purchase order in, and it had, it had, it had to be paid off, and then they would pay us back as a school district. Desi took that away, because many school districts were going through their, were going through their, their budget. So now we don't have to do that, the money is right there and readily available. If we're in a hybrid model, and we have, we need to get more teachers, will that impact the budget? Yes, it will. However, we would not, we would probably hire full-time substitutes, so that would not impact us going further, and they would be, for a full-time sub, it would be for a limited time, and not contracting them for years to come. So we look at the full-time sub. For technology, we've gotten some grant money, we did apply for some of the grant that was out there, I think it was 25 million, that Desi put out for 25 million. We went and we applied for some of the grant money for bandwidth and for some, some hotspots and switches. All the switches have been changed at the Mitchell School, Central School, and the high school. They have changed some of the server, the high school server has been changed, the Mitchell, the Mitchell server was changed. We worked at Central School last year, all of the switches at all of the buildings have been changed, and they're ready to go. The bandwidth has been increased, our E-rate is still on, we'll still get E-rate money back. So right now, with the COVID response, we're doing pretty well, and we've worked really hard with our vendors. John and I, John mostly, but John and I worked a lot with the vendors when they stopped in March 13th, like our Xerox machines, our, our copy machines, we got money back and then put it forward. We just got three new, we just got new copy machines here in the main, in the offices, and we'll start, they'll start going out to the schools pretty soon. So we've done everything that we needed to do in that budget, and we've done pretty well. We had some capital money, and we're, we're still, we're still using that money. We had projects that were put forward that were still, that were still accepted for capital projects, and they're, they're going to go on as scheduled. We know that the before and after care, we were going to use a lot of the before and after care money, we don't have to at this time, because now we can, it needs to get done faster, so we can have some of that money from COVID do some of that. So I feel pretty confident on the financials. I do know that John is going to give you a list in the next meeting that we have of all of the things that we have purchased with COVID response. The, one of the issues that he didn't want to come out with now is because it has been, it started, Joanne can shake her head, it started with, we had to have a purchase order, we had to have paid for it, we've had to have it signed off, and then we would get reimbursed. Then Desi came back about, I don't know, three or four weeks later into that and said, wait a minute, we're killing the schools, because they're, they don't have their Chapter 70 funding, some schools are out of money, we haven't allocated anything to them yet, because we're still waiting for Chapter 70 to come through. And so we haven't allocated any of that money, so the town's going through their money, trying to keep up with the schools. So then it got to be, okay, let's just pay for that, let's pay for it, don't encumber it, let's, let's get it, let's pay for it now. So those types of things have been great, we have a nice relationship with Mr. Noble, he was down here, you know, with him up at his office yesterday, then he came down to see me again, he was here this evening, he's, he truly is a school supporter, and I, I feel confident that we're, we're doing well. But John will come with a list of everything that we've bought and that we're doing with COVID response, so that you'll have an opportunity to see that. Some of it, we'll need to have the vote and, and on the warrants and this and that, but I do want to say, there are some things that we had to do immediately, ASP to buy this PPEs, but, back in March, we started to order things, because we said, they're going to be out of things, so let's start ordering. We're starting to get things now, Joanne, correct, that we ordered probably in April, and they're just starting to show up. We got 20,000 masks, 40,000, 20, 40,000?
20,000, 40,000.
Yeah.
Checked for safety, we get a sheet with them that talks about what's in their products and the safety that goes along with them. The masks are, have been tested for hospital grade that we are getting from the vendor, so we are looking at all of that, and we're lucky that these vendors are getting these materials in.
So, you know, it's July, it's August, and we started this in March and April, and we continue to do it. The hotspots, we just got another shipment of hotspots, Mr. Shea was putting them together the other day. I don't know if you've seen the touch views, the touch views have shown up, and we got to buy some of it, some touch views, we bought, we bought extras using the COVID money, so that kids, when they're at home, the touch views are much, it's, it's a better, it's a better system, it's a better, better screen to look at, so when a teacher's teaching. It's a lot more interactive for the teacher, and the teachers loved it, they've, they tried it out at Mitchell School, we had it down there for a few days last year, in a couple of classrooms. Kate, you got to try it out. I know that at Central School, I think all your touch views are up. Are they up, Kate? Yep. And then today, they were here at the high school, and I think they were down at Mitchell School as well, today, yesterday, and today. So we're ahead of it, and, and it's moving, moving pretty well.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, I would just like to know what exactly a touch view is, like what, I've never heard of it before.
It is a computer, and it is interactive off the screen. So there's a lot of interactive things that the touch view can do, you don't have to do it from a keyboard. It's very simple to use, the kids are very interactive with it, you can put lessons up on it, you can put music on it, you can hook it into different curriculums. If Kate decides, or Andrew decides to buy a curriculum for it, they can plug the curriculum in, or download the curriculum inside to the touch view. The touch views are made in Brockton, so if something goes wrong, the company comes right down here and switches them over, and that was one of the good things, this is, we, we bought from Oakers, and they are right out of Brockton, so that's a nice thing. But they're very interactive, there's one in my office, you're more than welcome to come in and see it, it's in the, in our conference room, we're going to get a tutorial on it. We've had a couple tutorials, but John said that he's going to have a tutorial for us on it, in touch down below, something will come up, and then, just almost like a smartboard, but a lot better. They're, they're replacing the smartboards, it's a lot better, it's just, Erin Fisher, if she were here, she would say, thank goodness, we've got touch views. This was her, this was her push, was to go for the touch views.
Thank you.
And less money.
Karen, did I see you put your number? Nope, okay. I have a question, and, and I'm not sure if you want to field this, or maybe one of the elementary principals might want to field it. So one of my biggest fears in whichever model we go forward with, given the remote aspect, is that I think one of the big unknowns is the difference in home life in the fall versus what we had in the spring. The world locked down in March, virtually, most of our parents were home with their children, and so whatever the kids were doing, there could be some level of supervision. We're in a different world now, and a lot of parents are back at work. And I know, working with kids at this age, and my own struggles with my children, is that, you know, not having a watchful eye over the child at nine o'clock in the morning to make sure that what they're doing is appropriate in what the class is asking. And so my, my question or concern is, for the parents who are working, when they get home, is there an ability for them to come, go back in and see what was expected of the child during the day, make sure it's complete, retouch it, finish it, do whatever it might be? So if I get home and find out that my, one of my children didn't do his math, can he and I sit down at four o'clock and do the math?
Andrew?
I can speak to Mitchell, anyway. Google Classroom, sorry. Google Classroom will be the hub of the curriculum.
Let me grab the chair. Sure.
I like to think I could be brief, but I know how this usually goes. So for both an in-person component and for a remote component, the, the foundation of the curriculum and the hub of information will be Google Classroom for both. One of the things that- I like to think I could be brief, but I know how this usually goes. So for both an in-person component and for a remote component, the foundation of the curriculum and the hub of information will be Google Classroom for both. One of the things that I took away from the spring, both as a parent of students, some of whom had utilized Google Classroom, and my third grader, for example, who not only had he not used it, but his teacher hadn't previously, was, parents needed to know how to navigate that, the kids needed to know how to navigate it. I mean, just as an example, my third grader would go in, he would see what was posted for the day and he would just, if there was an assignment attached to it, a sheet, he would just click right on the sheet and then have no idea how to navigate or what he was supposed to be doing with it because he hadn't read the directions. So one of the things that I want to look at doing, whether it's something that we put together in-house or if there's something that's already out there, is basically a training around what it's going to look like each day. So if your child is home, working remotely, or if your child is in school, what's that in general terms going to look like? And then what measures are in place for you to be able to go in and say, was this turned in? You know, did you watch the video? Tell me about the video that you watched because I see here in the format that your teacher has communicated that this is how we can check in with you. I can see that this is something you were responsible for today. You know, let me know what's going on with that. So I think, you know, one of the things will be, like I had said, soliciting information from parents as we solidify this model, as to things that worked well for them and things that didn't, now that they know how we're going to move forward. Also taking away the, from the experience that we had and the feedback that we got and trying to put something together that, again, the teachers can be in sync with, the parents can be in sync with, and obviously the students. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. I think honestly, one of the big, for the remote portion, one of the big factors in younger kids being successful is the flexibility for families to work with their kids when they can work with them, you know? A lot of parents are going to be at work and kids are going to be with grandparents, at daycare, in a group setting and may not be able to do their math at nine o'clock in the morning. So as long as we're factoring that into how we build this, I think that's built for success.
Absolutely. Thanks for the feedback though.
Thank you. Other questions?
Karen? Pull your mask down here.
For any of these policies such as masks where they're not properly used for distancing or excessively missing remote sessions?
On the masks, I can say that that is when at, at the Department of Education and they are still talking about it. We've talked with our principals about it, we've talked to our attorney about it. We need, we'll get guidance on that.
So I don't know if anybody else got the email. I got the email from MASC regarding a mask policy. So I was going to say something after the meeting, just to mention it, to bring it to the next meeting, but so there's a blanket policy out there that should be coming sometime soon.
Yeah, I have it right here from MASC, but I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the Department of Education because he could change that or...
And that's something we'll have to discuss too because we also want to consider if that fits with what we want to enforce.
Oh, absolutely. And I think that, you know, the masks do pose an anxious, an angst. I don't really like to wear it. Some people like it. I mean, I don't think anybody likes to wear it. I should say nobody likes to wear it. I shouldn't say that. If students don't go on remote, is that, that was the question, if they're not on the remote or they are on the remote? Or... Sure. I would, I'm going to leave that up to Mr. Sylvia, but I would say to you that, and he can nod at me, attendance will be taken if students are excessively absent. You have that policy, it's in the student handbook and Mr. Sylvia will abide by that. And so will Mr. Clemmons and they will work on that student to get them into school or get them into the remote learning part of it. If they are not social distancing, we will remind them the first time, we will remind them the second time. And if they need to be pulled out of the hallway or to be put into, with the behavior specialist, they will be done, that will be dealt with. And I think that we need to just be courteous and comply and be respectful to peoples, to be respectful of distance between each other. And I can't see, I just see that we've been in this for so long since March 13th and we started taking it serious, maybe like on April 1st when you couldn't go anyplace and kids were like, why can't I go out and why can't I go to the movies and why can't I play with my friends? I think people took that seriously enough to say, I can't, you know? High school's going to be, the element, we've already decided that Central School would be much easier than the high school to keep kids away from each other.
Oh, for sure.
So, but 500 kids is much easier than 1,000, seven through 12 students to monitor. And they, principals have asked us to supply monitors for a small or sustained period of time. They would be part-time employees, like you asked Rob about financials and would we need more people? We are looking at doing monitors to bring in. We do have college students that graduated last year that their colleges may be on remote, that they didn't go, that they're staying at home, they may be taking a gap year and we could be using those students or utilizing those students, especially the students that were going into education at the Central and Mitchell School. Probably wouldn't bring a high school graduating senior back to the high school. That wouldn't be a good fit. Does that answer?
Thank you.
Was that close? Okay.
So my question is regarding scheduling. So we've been talking about remote learning and hybrid learning. Has there been any discussion, as other districts have done? We've seen a lot of districts are moving to the hybrid model and now we're starting to see some districts are moving to the hybrid model with a delayed start. So they're starting in a remote model on, in our case, on September 16th and then waiting two weeks, three weeks to observe, to see what happens because all those districts that are going back are going to be data points for us to observe and learn from. And I'm curious, has there been any discussion through the task force or internally to whether or not that is viable for us? One of the things that I'm concerned about is that if, when we do get back together, if there is going to be a spike, given the exponential nature of the virus, that is probably going to happen pretty quickly. So I don't think that a delay of six months is something that we need to talk about, but do we see a value in talking about a week or two or three or four before we, before we open the doors?
I mean, I think, I think that's up to you. I know that Taunton is doing that. I know that, I know that Taunton decided to go after Thanksgiving and so, yeah, or up to Thanksgiving. So I get that.
I just see a great collective benefit at a relatively short cost.
Well, I'll let you decide that, Rob. I disagree. I think that people need to have the choice. I think that going from 1,000 students at the high school down to 500, going from 600, 500 down to 250 at the Central School and going from 750, there's 700 to 350 at the Mitchell School can mitigate a lot of, a lot of the potential of the issue. If we wait any longer, we're just waiting for, I mean, we wait three weeks and Abington has a spike. So then Abington stays home. Then we're going to say, oh, we can't go back, so let's wait another three weeks. Bridgewater, Rainham's been in for six weeks. Oh, they had a spike, they're going to, well now we should stay home. If we all go back at the same time and we try the model, we are going to be watching and seeing and knowing what the data is. Rob, I'm telling you, if I, if I had a nickel for every student, every child that was out on that AstroTurf every day without a mask or riding their bike through East Bridgewater or out on the playground or running around...
Like the play's middle lane.
And we've had to, we got in trouble because we rented our field. I sent Patrick up there last week. Jeff Sylvia has gone up there. They've got, they can't sit next to each other. They need to, you know, parents, parents are sitting next to each other. Parents need to be, we all need to be vigilant. Wash our hands, social distance, wear our face masks. If we do those things, we're going to stay safer than if we didn't. And again, if any parent or child wants to stay home and do a remote learning, they can do that. They can take that time, they can take two or three or four weeks if they want to. There's no problem with doing that. If you want to entertain that and you talk about that and you tell me that's what you want to do, it's September 16th that we're starting. That's, that's already two weeks that we didn't start on August 31st. So that's two weeks. If you go three weeks from there, you're looking at October.
Well, I was actually talking about starting on 16th, just remotely. So structure of the school.
We would have to because that, yeah, the guidelines, I understand. Yep. That's up, that's up to you, but I feel that we would do a disservice to our parents and to our kids if we went in that direction. I've heard from a lot of parents today, I think you were on a lot of school committee messages. We're getting begged by students, we're getting begged by parents. And yes, I heard from the Teachers Association, something else may come in, in four days from now, we may get another message. The governor may call it off. Desi may call it off, but...
All this could be for nothing.
All this could be for nothing or it could be for, we got to get them back.
But I think two important things to keep in mind. Anytime the kids come back to school, whether it's hybrid in September, September 16th or October 15th, there's going to be a spike in sickness. Germs are just going to... It, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but we should consider it, like it's going to happen whether we go remote for a couple of weeks or not. Secondly, we start the school year off remote, pushing it further into the fall, approaching flu season, which is now going to be intertwined with a spike in coronavirus. Then we're going to transition all of our kids who, I think at last count, we had 25 emails from students, like we want to come back, we want to come back, we want to come back. But that was awesome and I commend those students for taking the effort and sending their emails. I mean, if any smile, these kids are going to be back in school. So if we delay it, we come back hybrid, then we're in November, December and there's a chance, I think, I don't think anyone here would say, there's not a chance that we're going to have to go to remote at some point in the height of the sickness season. I think we have to wait that out too.
I agree. But my, the answer to my question, we're talking about two months and that's two weeks we can gather, we can gather information, make a decision. Imagine if someone was...
I certainly, I, so, oh, Rob, I certainly understand that and I know that, I talked to Mrs. Pennington last night and she had mentioned that as well to me. And I get the sincerity of it. I'm not saying that you're wrong and I'm not going against you. It's your consideration, you're going to tell me what you want and that's fine. I guess, I guess from me, being up here and talking to my principals and talking to the task force for the last seven days, we had people that volunteered their time, that came out here. They didn't have to be here, there's no payment. Usually I would have coffee and cookies at every meeting. We would have had something for them. We couldn't put anything out for anybody. But they came in and we heard from the task force last night. Karen, I mean Karen led this task force and every night came out. That never came up. Not one person said that. Not one person said that in any of those meetings.
So, I, I, no, I'm, yeah. So I... Relatively small numbers of people.
Yeah.
I just want to recognize that, that, you know, I, I understand your recommendation and it's hardly the first time I've heard it. There are other districts who consider such a plan. So the superintendent was asked by the state to bring, you know, propose a plan to the committee for, for our consideration. I think we're going to do that tonight based on our recommendation, consider it. If we decide that we are not comfortable with our plan moving forward, I think going back to the drawing board and looking at option B, option C, and your proposal being one of those is certainly a viable plan forward. I mean, just as a matter of procedure. Rather than altering the plan that's been proposed to us tonight, let's decide on the plan that Superintendent Legault is proposing. If it's a no-go, what are our other options? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Things could change next Wednesday. I mean, we, the commissioner told us today, I mean, on Tuesday, he said, I'll see you in, I'll see you in a week. Yesterday at five o'clock, we got an email, I'm calling you to a 12:30 meeting. It's moving rapidly. I mean, things are moving rapidly. So do I think that it could roll back? Oh, yeah. Could go full remote?
Teresa, did you have a question? Okay. Sorry, I thought you were on this one.
I don't know who to ask, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me, let me go through the group then. Amanda, do you have any other questions? Teresa? Sure. Alan? Rob? Karen? So fantastic questions all around, I think. Well thought out and to the point.
Sure. I do have one question. So the question is, so last night when they were doing the presentation, they mentioned, I think it must have, might have been Dr. Williams who mentioned it about four weeks. Oh, that's okay, I can hear me. Can everybody out there hear me? Because I can hear me.
I can't understand you.
Can you hear me?
I couldn't understand you.
Okay, now you can hear me better and I still have my mask on. Thank you. So last night, Dr. Williams said that to allow, if there's a student that's going remote, to allow up to four weeks to be reintegrated into, or to be integrated into or acclimated into the, with the rest of the kids, you know, on the hybrid model. So I'm wondering, and this was just an idea and I don't even know if it's possible, if when they're creating the cohorts, is it possible just to create the cohorts based on all of the students and that way if there was a remote student, then they could just, like say they got assigned to cohort A or B or whatever and then if they were not in, like because they're at home doing remote, then they say, oh, like two weeks from then, they want to come back to school or the parent wants them to come back to school. Is that possible or is that not doable?
It's possible. You want to take it? Andrew or you?
Yeah.
He loves this question. This is his question.
Well, just, so if a student, if we were in a hybrid format and a student or family opted to go fully remote and then after some period of time decided they wanted to come back, that's what you're asking about, right? So although we're going to establish cohorts for, for the hybrid model, so A, kids are going to come Monday, Tuesday, B, students will come on Thursday and Friday, the students that are in what we're referring to as cohort C, which is all remote, are still assigned in those classes. So they're still following, you know, if they're assigned to, you know, Ms. Legault's class, even though they may be taking everything fully remote, they're still a member of that class, they're still connecting with Ms. Legault on a regular basis, doing all the same assignments those students are doing so that if we do need to make that transition, it can be hopefully, you know, streamlined obviously and as smooth as possible. So they will still remain for technical purposes in enrollment, they'll be enrolled in that class still. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
But they may be...
Right.
But you've got to just move...
Right. Right. I mean, we have to, we'll have to take into account that although the student is a member of the class, they haven't physically been present and their physical presence is what may take time to resolve in terms of, might need to alter the setup of the classroom or something of that nature, but I'm confident that we'll be able to do those things pretty expeditiously.
And the four weeks comes from the state.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. At this time, that is the conclusion of the 30 minutes we allotted for questions. So I wanted to ask each of the committee members if they have a statement they would like to read before we make a motion, someone makes a motion for a vote. And I'll just work my way around the table. Amanda, did you have a statement you wanted to read?
Yeah, newbie goes first.
Sure.
That's fine.
Yep.
So I just want to say I'm so grateful to the EBPS administration, our teachers, our elected officials, our parents, our amazing community members for their incredible commitment of time, for their concerns, hard work and deliberation and open-mindedness throughout this process, this reopening process. As we've discussed at length tonight, the guidance has consistently changed, the state data has shifted and new studies have emerged and I truly believe that each of these constituencies have been trying in good faith to determine what's best for our students moving forward and I believe that my, my committee members believe this as well. I wanted to also say I'm just grateful for the sacrifices that have been made by all parties and the sacrifices of our students, our kids in order to remain safe up until this point so that we can return to whatever our new normal will be. A lesson I hope we take away from these last few months is the importance of community, the importance of talking to our friends, to our neighbors, to our colleagues and working together to collectively find a solution for whatever this new world will be. And I look forward to what that brings into a post-COVID world, with those relationships being there. And, you know, I just, I think, I know we all have the best interest of our students at heart and I just think that, you know, to echo what's been said tonight... echo what's been said tonight, the only way any of these models are gonna be effective is if we all do our best to keep that community spirit in mind, and listen to the guidelines from CDC, from our community members, from our Board of Health. And, you know, I'm committed, and I know the school committee is committed, to monitoring these processes in our local data, as we keep you and the children's health and safety in the forefront. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trista?
So, I, as Liz mentioned earlier, I had the opportunity to participate in the task force as a parent. And I did sit there, and I listened, and I learned, and my goal was to be my best educated self, because I know that this is coming our way for a vote discussion. First, I wanna say, if anyone thinks this is, had been a decision that had been proper fitness, or, you know, not thought out, just as a parent, the eight to 12 hours I put into that small period of time, knowing what the administration has been doing, I know so much more than I need to know about resilience, about health and safety. I was on the health and safety group, which was comprised mostly of nurses. Nurses with feedback on, on both ends of the spectrum, and I think we all recognize there's a lot of passion around it. I'm very passionate about it. But I'm comfortable, and I'm confident that we, as a district, have been responsible, will continue to be responsible. I really feel that we need to be reasonable in our process, and I think we need to teach our kids how to be resilient. What we just went through, and there's potential for it to come back around, I know it's been said, but I do believe it caused a mental health crisis for our kids, for all of us, but our kids. And the longer we keep our kids at school, regardless of the grade level, and we don't give them some sort of interaction, even though it's not gonna be the same, there's gonna be math, there's gonna be social distancing, we are putting our kids at risk. You've raised these emails from these students, they need to come back to school. They need to be in school. We don't know, even if we approved this hybrid model tonight, we still don't know what it will look like, because there's a lot of work out that needs to continue to go into it. But I just wanna thank the administration for all of their efforts, everyone in the task force, the community, for their questions, their, their thoughtful questions, their, their frustrations all around. But I truly believe that this has been thought out, and we're putting our kids more at risk if we keep them at home and run over the computer.
Superintendent didn't think I was gonna say anything, but I am. So, I just wanted to say, so last night, for anyone that was here at the task force meeting, there was a little bit of tension, and I'm coming over to just shake the superintendent's hand. I did have a lengthy conversation with her last night, and there's no hard feelings, and I did sanitize my hands, so I'm clean, and I won't breathe on you. But we do work together, and we'll continue to work together, and we'll be respectful. That's it. Okay. So, I would just like to participate in the task force, and thank all of the parents who appreciate it, and I respect all of your concerns and opinions. There are no easy answers. I appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into the reentry plan. I know that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on our administration team, teachers, staff, parents, and students in this unprecedented time. I have spoken to many parents with varying opinions of what type of plan we should follow for our reentry back to school in addition to my participation on the task force. I am not taking this decision lightly. I value every student's education, and I don't want anyone to fall through the cracks. It is my obligation as a school committee member to gather as much information as possible in order for me to make an informed decision. Dr. Williams stated that the, the only certainty in this uncertain time is remote learning. It is our responsibility to provide a fair and equitable education for all students. While I am in favor of the hybrid model, we need to ensure that our remote learning model is well-developed and tested, as that will ensure our hybrid model's success. It is my opinion that we phase in the hybrid model, even if it's just a couple of weeks in the beginning, or whatever, but that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Rob?
I can't say it anymore eloquently than my predecessor, so I'm just gonna offer my thanks. I think it's a really, really solid exercise in community building. I take a look at all the different people, all the different stakeholders that have come together and offered all the different opinions, and I think the whole achievement is pretty amazing. Like, and I can say we, as well as you, so, everyone who is on the task force, who's straight in, I have to say, dear thanks. And whatever decision we take, we're always committed to making it work. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody. I've seen way more of you in the last three weeks than I have in the last three years, and it was enjoyable, and exhausting, and stressful, all in one, and probably one of the most educational things I've ever done, and to Brian Kylie, I know all about UNIVENT, or whatever those things are called, and I thank him for that. Because, you know, as people have asked for some of the little details, we in our, in our task force subcommittees, we were down to minutia. I can tell you every piece of PPE that has been ordered for this district from the beginning, because we went through it all to make sure that we were comfortable with the volumes and the numbers. This has been an effort by everybody, and I gotta tell you, I've toggled almost daily on where I was gonna land. But when I see the efforts of all these fine administrators, the desire of our kids, who, we would get emails throughout this meeting even, probably more I haven't looked, my, my own child, the nurses who had so much more knowledge than I do on, and called my own anxiety about some of this. Our kids need to be back in school. Bottom line, they need it. They need some sense of normalcy, some sense of structure. I'm not a teacher. I value our teachers more now than I ever did, although I always did. I certainly respect their concerns. I think we have done everything possible to address them. We've gone to the six feet. We're, we're looking at the air quality assessment. We will do everything possible to make sure that every breathing thing, even if it's, don't we have a guinea pig in high school somewhere, is, is safe.
That was gonna read them.
They used to be. Well, I'm saying that, I mean, I want guinea pig to be safe. They used to be. And I, I think we need to get kids back in the building sooner rather than later. I think the 10 days was necessary, but I would've loved to seen them back August 31st if we could've, because they needed. They're bored, they're anxious, they're uncertain, and school is what makes them feel safe. And we've done everything we can to do that. So, thank you to everybody. I support the recommendations of the superintendent, and we'll vote accordingly.
Thank you. So, first, I'd like to, well, before I begin, I just wanna recognize, after I wrote this, the onslaught of 50-something emails that the committee members received from the community, and, you know, we, we always teach, I can't believe I'm about to use this phrase, but we always teach our young people that, you know, getting involved in civics is, is valuable for them, valuable for the community, and, and, you know, I think school committee is the, the most local form of, of, of politics they could be involved in, and I want the students and the parents to know that we read those emails, and we considered them, and their voice mattered today. You know, I, I take pride in writing back to people when they email us, and I couldn't keep up with it this afternoon. And so, I want those that took the time to do it to know that your voice and your opinions definitely, it gave us pause, and we thought about it today, so thank you for that. First, I would like to recognize Superintendent Legault, Dr. Williams, Mr. Shea, Mrs. Clifford, and the building principals, and the entire task force for their incredibly hard work formulating a plan for the fall that they felt was ready for this committee. There is no question that this is the most daunting challenge any of us have faced in our educational careers, and the thought, care, and hard work that went into where we are today is a credit to all of those involved. I know firsthand how difficult some of the choices you have made are. Speaking with superintendents and principals from around the South Shore, we are truly in a situation where there is no clear, easy path to decide on, no clear right or wrong. Our options all result in plans that have shortcomings and flaws, and the only real solution involves vaccines and a widespread immunity to COVID. So, until that comes, we must push forward with how to best fulfill our mandate to get the next generation ready for the world around them. The committee has heard vocally from proponents and opponents of both hybrid and remote learning, as well as those who have asked for a full opening. The goal here was not simply to railroad students into the building without consideration for the risks. If that were the case, there would be a plan in front of us for a full opening. Consideration has been taken for the need for the emotional well-being of our students, the needs of special education and English language learners, and the many, many students who thrive off face-to-face instruction and risk falling further behind in a fully remote setting. The mental health of our students, who were isolated from their peers and teachers all spring, was a concern as we looked for what was best for our students. What has resulted here is a plan which, while still not accomplishing all of the things our district would like to be able to do in a school year, balances all those needs with the safety of our students by taking the reasonable precautions recommended by the state and national health experts, to separate, to be hygienically vigilant, and to reduce as much as possible the risk of spread to each other. By supporting this plan, I acknowledge that not every parent will agree with us, but they still have the right to opt their children out this fall if they feel it is the better plan for them. A remote plan does not afford the same luxury to those who would like their children in school. Work is still to continue with our adults, who work with these students on sanitizing capability, the ability to keep themselves safe with supported protocols while students in the building, and how to further bulk up our ability to protect the staff that work with our kids every day. Aspects of this plan will likely change in the coming weeks and months. Guidance will change. Today, I feel this is the best possible plan to meet our children's needs, my kids, all of your kids, and all of your kids in the town. I support the hybrid option. Kara, did you have anything you wanted to add before we move on?
I may not have the vote, but I can have a voice, and it's my responsibility to use that voice to speak for all of the students across the great schools. And while I, I do agree, I do think that we need to be in the building while we're in hybrid, I really want to see the kids again. It's been, I believe, it'll be six months from leaving school to going back in the building, and even throughout the coronavirus task force meetings, being in the building, the, even just those few short hours, really opened my eyes to how much I miss the school, how much I miss being here. And while I do commend my teachers for supporting the remote option, I do want to say that when we are going, to keep not only the physical health of students in mind, but also our mental health.
I would like to make a motion that the East Bridgewater School Committee support the hybrid option of education as presented tonight, with a start date of September 16th to 2020.
I am in favor of the hybrid.
I'm in favor of it being, being fitted in.
So, that's not a vote for your voice, but a vote for the citizens' vote.
Five of four, five of four, and this time it goes, the motion passes five to one. And thank you all, all the members.
Thank you. I would just like to say, even though I voted against it, it does not mean I won't support it. I still support it, because that was the will of the committee.
Superintendent Legault, short, I think, the first one, the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth, are you also considering the election?
Not really, no. Same, finally, the only thing is, is I was going to ask that we would table, I mean, I want you to see it, we started talking about it. We did not have, we have not sat down with Mr. Shippey. I know that he has seen it. I have not received any emails back from him unless he, and Gina never said that, Dr. Williams didn't tell me that, and Barbara hasn't told me that. So, we do have an agreement that we would consult for the calendar.
I canceled my vacation.
This, nothing's... Yes. Right. And we've been talking about the 10 days, and it's on all of our presentations. The presentation will be sent out in the morning to, on EBI notifications to everybody, so. Just, Tim, Mr. McGlaughlin, we may need to, at some point, if, just the way the fluidness of things are going, we may need to call a meeting in between those. Okay.
All right. Let's take a motion this time to approve the minutes of school committee meetings of June 16th and July 1st, 2020. Move by Teresa. Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
I would take a motion to approve a council table warrant, 55 S.C. dated 6/30/2020, 55 S.C. dated 7/29/2020.
Aye.
Move by Teresa. Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to accept a bill of warrants, 52 P.S. dated 6/24/2020, 54 P.S. dated 6/20/2020, 2 P.S. dated 7/8/2020, 4 P.S. dated 7/22/2020, and 6 P.S. dated 8/5/2020. Move by Teresa. Second by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, committee, calendar, table. Okay. Oh, last, last matter. You have in front of you the proposed calendar of school committee dates based on our last meeting of the year. We have struck out two meetings, one November, one December, one in the fall week, and a schedule the other in the fall week for Christmas. So, you have in front of you a revised calendar that has one November meeting date, one December meeting date of the, of the, so, I'll take a motion, we can discuss, make a motion to accept the proposed 2020 to 2021 calendar. Move by Teresa. Second by Teresa. Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They were all, all part of the motion. Before I make a motion to close, I just want to acknowledge real quick that committee has received a couple of the policy reports we've set. We frankly, I would rather the policies that committee needs briefly before our next meeting to review them, to ensure that there is no fine tuning of the language that these protocols use before we bring it to a vote. I think these policies are something that certainly waive the standard of review time once they get in front of the full committee. But I just, I know about committees that are fine tuning of the language, but the need of their, one of the specifics is a lot of policy, really, that gives different power and purposes of opinions, and let's just make sure the language is in the role. So, I, I would ask the policies that committee needs to be before we come back. And if you're uncomfortable with the language of that, the mask policy, or whatever the point is, we need to be.